Good evening. City Council is now in session. Please stand for the invocation by Councilperson Butler Barlow, which will be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let us pray. We are thankful for this day that you have given us and for its blessings, its opportunities, and its challenges. We recognize that there are many burdens in the world, in our own homes and families, in our city, in our state, and in the world. We especially lift up Turkey, Syria, and Ukraine with the challenges that they are facing on a daily basis. Help us remember, as we help carry each other's burdens, it makes the load lighter for all of us. May we appreciate and use each day that comes to us. We pray for strength and guidance for each day as it comes, for each day's duties, for each day's problems. May we be challenged to give our best always, and may we be assured of your presence with us. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to take a moment to announce that Councilman Williams will not be present this evening, and he has been excused. The Freedom of Information Act certification is required at this time. Madam Clerk, please present the resolution for consideration.
A resolution certifying the closed meeting of February the 15th, 2023 pursuant to Virginia Code Section 2.2-3712 now therefore be resolved that the City Council of the City of Suffolk hereby certify that, to the best of each member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from the open meeting requirements of Virginia law, and only such public business matters as were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered by the City Council of the City of Suffolk in the closed meeting.
Council, a motion would be in order. Councilman Fawcett?
Move to approve, Mayor.
Got a motion for approval from Councilman Fawcett. Councilman Johnson?
Second.
Second from Councilman Johnson. Is there any discussion in the motion? Hearing none, council members prepare to vote. Please cast your vote. Madam Clerk, please record the vote.
The motion is approved by a vote of seven to zero.
Approval of the minutes from the August 3rd, 2023 work session and regular meeting is the next item for consideration, and a motion would be in order. Councilman Fawcett?
Move to approve, Mayor.
Got a motion for approval from Councilman Fawcett. Councilperson Butler Barlow?
Second.
Second from Councilperson Butler Barlow. Is there any discussion in the motion? Hearing none, council members prepare to vote. Please cast your vote. Madam Clerk, please record the vote.
The motion is approved by a vote of seven to zero.
We do have a very special presentation this evening, a certificate of recognition for Mr. Richard Nicholas Malito, designer of the Freedom Flag and a Suffolk native. Mr. Manager, please provide an overview.
Yes, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council. During your December 22nd, 2022 work session, you received a presentation by Mr. John Riley and Mr. Tiny Andrews, members of the Freedom Flag Foundation regarding the symbolic purpose of the Freedom Flag. At this time, I would like to call Mr. Richard Nicholas Malito, Mr. James Malito, Mr. John Riley, and Mr. Tiny Andrews to the podium to be recognized, so we may recognize Mr. Richard Malito, designer of the Freedom Flag and founder of the Freedom Flag Foundation. Mr. Malito is a Suffolk native.
Madam Clerk, will you please read the certificate of recognition?
Certificate of recognition awarded to Mr. Richard Nicholas Malito. This certificate is presented in recognition of Suffolk native, Mr. Richard Nicholas Malito, who designed the 9/11 Freedom Flag. The Freedom Flag commemorates and memorializes the victims, heroes, and tragic events of September 11, 2021. Mr. Malito first sketched the Freedom Flag on September 20th, 2021, on a napkin in his restaurant in Richmond, Virginia. On November 12th, 2021, the Freedom Flag was adopted by the Virginia Historical Society as part of a special exhibition in conjunction with the Smithsonian Institution effort to commemorate the events of September 11, 2021. In 2022, Mr. Malito established the nonprofit Freedom Flag Foundation with a mission to see the Freedom Flag become our national symbol of remembrance for 9/11. In 2003, Governor Mark Warner issued a certificate of recognition designating the Freedom Flag as the Commonwealth of Virginia's official symbol of September 11, 2021. In 2018, the Virginia General Assembly voted unanimously to add the Freedom Flag to the Code of Virginia as the Commonwealth's official flag of remembrance of the September 11, 2021 events, making the Freedom Flag our nation's first codified 9/11 remembrance flag. The symbol of the Freedom Flag memorializes the courageous and ongoing response of all Americans to threats against our freedom. This 15th day of February, 2023, as presented by Mayor Michael D. Dooman.
I'll say, I'll say a couple words to the mayor and city council and city staff. Certainly, we did sneak down here in December, and we appreciate the warm reception we received. So, it said among great leaders that they're great communicators, and it is incredibly difficult to summarize the events of 9/11, 2001 in, in words, to teach it, to remember it, to honor the lives lost, the first responders, the military, all the parts that are bound up in this symbol. So, Richard, who I've now known for about 15 years, he communicated it, in my opinion, perfectly with, with the symbol of the Freedom Flag. No words needed, just symbols. It's unchanged since the day he sketched it. His brother had input, as older brothers do, as Marines do, and it's, it's stuck. It's stuck. And Richard persisted as a leader. I would say, one day, maybe in Rico County, he'll give you a proclamation as a, as a restaurateur who survived 40-plus years, probably the longest single owner of a, of a restaurant in the Richmond area in existence today. That's who Richard is. I think it's a testament to his family, to Suffolk, that he can be honored for this, this enduring symbol. And he's, he's stuck with his belief that America needs to never forget, in honor of his mom, who was a teacher, trying to teach history, in honor of his brother, who served our country, and came back from Vietnam, changed, and, and for all Americans. So I said in December, I lost one of my best friends on 9/11, one of 2,977 lives lost. Every one of those lives had a family, has a story, and 7,000-plus servicemen and women gave their lives in the war on freedom afterwards. So that's in addition to the death toll on 9/11. Thousands of first responders have perished from 9/11 illness. So this is really a gift to our country. It's hard to put it all into words, what it means for me and, and for Richard, other than to just put it and memorialize it. And today, it's in several state codes, as we talked about last month. It's in Oklahoma, it's in Delaware, and Minnesota, Kentucky, and Maryland are now considering similar legislation. And like, like a true leader, he's got a big goal, which is to make it the 9/11 symbol of remembrance for the nation. So Suffolk should be very proud as a Virginian. I'm very proud. Suffolk should be very proud of what Richard has done and his family, and it's just our honor to be here tonight. So I will say thank you, and don't know if we got any other words from our group. Turn it over.
Mr. Mayor, City Manager, City Council, I want to thank you for your efforts in pushing this through. Goes without saying, took a lot of effort to keep this from Richard. That's quite a surprise, but we pulled it off, and I'd like to especially thank past Councilman Goldberg, since he's the one that I approached and brought this to City Council back when we did, when we did it, and you all were unanimous that night, and we're privileged to be hearing what you all done. Jimmy would like to say something on behalf of the family.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council, city staff, and distinguished guests. My name is Jimmy Malito III. I reside in Henrico County, Virginia, at 12:07, Bobbydale Lane, 23229. I was born and raised in Suffolk, Virginia. At this time, I would like to say a few words about the city's resolution regarding the Freedom Flag and a certificate of recognition for my brother, Richard Nicholas Malito. Being a patriot, I followed in my family's footsteps. I'm a third-generation warrior. My grandfather fought in World War I. My father fought in World War II as a medic in the invasion of D-Day in Normandy. As for myself, I volunteered for the United States Marine Corps and served a combat tour in the Republic of Vietnam. I retired as a Virginia State Trooper on the eastern shore of Virginia, and on 9/11, 2001, I was watching TV after coming off a night shift. A news special broke, and it stated a plane had hit one of the Twin Towers. The rest is history. Speaking of history, history is history. One can never erase history. Some have tried, and as I speak, some have tried, as I speak, to know available. Not only Richard is my brother, I love him dearly. He is a true, true patriot. The symbolism in Richard's flag is history. Never to forget the sacrifices, past and present, veterans, law enforcement agencies, firefighters, and first responders. The City of Suffolk is the first city in the Commonwealth of Virginia to adopt this Freedom Flag as a remembrance of 9/11, 2001. On behalf, on behalf of the Malito family, we are humbled, thankful, and proud. Never forget. Thank you for your time.
No, I, I don't have my, I can't do this much. So, thank y'all, and I appreciate all that you've done. The words are well spoken, so, and I won't make it through all of it. So, again, the only thing I would say is, I made a promise to myself not to forget about Suffolk, Virginia.
This is impressed. Come on, Jimmy.
We have several of our board members here. Clarence Singleton, Pascal, yeah, if you want to come on up, please. And family members.
Come on, Pascal. Jump in anywhere.
Okay, give me just a second to get my composure back here. Got one question. Do you still have the napkin?
Oh, I do have the napkin.
Okay, awesome. All right, that would have been bothering me all night. Okay, now, we are going to move to removal of the consent agenda items and adoption, hopefully adoption of the agenda. And at this time, we'll consider the removal of items from the consent agenda and adoption of the entire agenda as presented. Removal of any item from the consent agenda would only be necessary if any member of City Council wishes to vote on a specific item separately, and a motion would be required. Additionally, City Manager Moore has information regarding CUP 2021-13 Shady Pine Borough Pit. Mr. City Manager, please provide City Council an overview.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council, as you recall, at your November 16th, 2022 City Council meeting, CUP 2021-013 was rescheduled for this evening. Staff is now on receipt of a written request from the applicant to withdraw CUP 2021-013 as the applicant is no longer pursuing this CUP request. The filing orders specifics, an ordinance to grant a conditional use permit to establish a surface mining operation, borough pit, on property located at zoning map 9, parcel 3, account number 252626000, CUP 2021-013. Due to this request to withdraw CUP 2021-013, it was not listed as part of tonight's agenda. At this time, I would ask City Council's consideration of a motion to adopt the agenda as presented.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Just for clarity, anyone who is in attendance tonight regarding CUP 2021-13 Shady Pine Borough Pit, please note that the City Manager has advised that the applicant has requested to withdraw the application. Therefore, a motion would be in order to adopt the agenda as presented. Councilman Fawcett?
May I move to approve it as?
Got a motion for approval from Councilman Fawcett. Councilman Rector?
Second.
Second from Councilman Rector. Is there any discussion in the motion? Hearing none, council members prepare to vote. Please cast your vote. Madam Clerk, please record the vote.
The motion is approved by a vote of seven to zero.
I will now move to agenda speakers. Madam Clerk, are there any agenda speakers at this time?
Yes, Mayor Dooman. The first agenda speaker is Chris Dove, 852 Colonel Mead Drive, representing self regarding item 17, an ordinance to accept and appropriate funds from the Napolitan, from Napolitano Homes in support of the design and construction of the Shoulders Hill Road Intersection Project.
Good evening. I apologize because some of the, there wasn't a whole lot of information presented by the city on this item, so some of it, I have to make some assumptions, or mainly, I'm just trying to make sure you're aware of some particulars. The Section 31601 Adequate Public Facilities, Section G, Advancement of Capacity, states, "No advancement of capacity for public facilities needed to avoid a deterioration of the adopted levels of service shall be accepted by the city unless the proposed public facility is a planned capital improvement." It also goes on to state that "The commitment to construct the public facilities prior to the issuance of a building permit shall be included as a condition of the development order and shall contain at the minimum." For the planned capital improvements, finding that the planned capital improvement isn't included in the capital improvement plan, an estimate of the total financial resources needed to construct the planned capital improvement described the cost participants associated, and more importantly, a schedule of commencement and completion of construction of the planned capital improvement with specific target dates for multi-phase or large-scale structural improvements. And then finally, a statement based on the analysis that the capital improvement plan is consistent with the comprehensive plan, a requirement, not just something you could ignore. So bear that in mind. You need a commencement and a completion date before you can accept capital improvement funds. Thank you.
The next three speakers are all regarding Consent Agenda Item Number Seven, a resolution of the City of Suffolk, Virginia proclaiming the recognition of events occurring on American soil on September 11, 2021, with the symbol of the Freedom Flag and recognition of its designer, Mr. Richard Nicholas Malito, a Suffolk native. The first of these three speakers is John Riley, 912 Rise Shaft Road, Midlothian, Virginia, representing the Freedom Flag Foundation.
Thank you. Good evening again. So I think we've spoken as a group already, unless you have further words. So I'll rescind my spot, but thank you.
The next speaker registered currently is James Malito, 12:07. Mr. Malito, did you wish to offer any additional comments? Did you want to offer any additional comments, Mr. Malito?
He's going to pass on.
Okay. Tiny Andrews, I believe he just departed, did he not, Mr. Andrews? Okay. The final speaker is Thomas Ryan, 119 Suffolk Meadows Boulevard, representing self regarding item 17, an ordinance to accept and appropriate funds from the Napolitano Homes, from the Napolitano Homes in support of the design and construction of the Shoulders Hill Road Intersection Project.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council, City Manager. Actually, Thomas Ryan, 119 Suffolk Meadows Boulevard, Suffolk. I actually appreciate that Napolitano Homes is proffering $126,576.40 to necessary roadwork on Shoulders Hill and Bridge Road intersection. It clearly shows me that Mr. Napolitano understands just how dangerous this section of road is, and he clearly understands that the city cannot approve any additional certificates of occupancy until that roadwork is completed, and these funds go a long way towards doing that. For this, I am sincerely appreciative. But until that work is completed, as required by the Adequate Public Facilities Ordinance of the Unified Development Ordinance 331-6012, approval of any additional certificates of occupancy before that intersection is completed would be in clear violation by the council. I would also like to make a correct statement made yesterday by Mayor Dooman during his Facebook Live broadcast when Facebook Live broadcast when referring to this proffer of funds. He noted that Mr. Napolitano offered this as part of the original rezoning proposal in March of 2018. According to the public documents that I received, this proffer was only offered as of January 18th, 2023, along with the current request for 186 more homes. Now, I'm not questioning his motive for doing that, but I wanted to correct Mr. Dooman that as a public official, to make sure that he presents the facts to the public as is required as a public official doing government business. Thank you very much.
That concludes the speakers. Mayor?
Okay, thank you, Madam Clerk. Please present the items for consideration.
Consent agenda item number seven. A resolution of the City of Suffolk, Virginia proclaiming the recognition of events occurring on American soil on September 11th, 2021, with the symbol of the Freedom Flag and recognition of its designer, Mr. Richard Malito, a Suffolk native. Consent agenda item number eight, an ordinance to accept and appropriate funds from the Commonwealth of Virginia Department of Aviation for the Suffolk Executive Airport. Consent agenda item number nine, an ordinance to accept and appropriate funds from the Hampton Roads Sanitation District for the City of Suffolk Department of Parks and Recreation, and consent agenda item number 10, a resolution to accept a donation of personal property for the Suffolk Department of Fire and Rescue.
Mr. Manager, please provide an overview of the items.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, Members of Council, in regards to item seven, it's a resolution proclaiming the Freedom Flag as the City of Suffolk's symbol for the remembrance of the events of September 11th, 2001, and directs the flag to be flown or displayed every year beginning on September 11th and continuing throughout the month of September. In addition, the resolution recognizes and honors Mr. Richard Nicholas Malito, a Suffolk native, for his design of the Freedom Flag and his commitment in remembering the events of September 11th, 2001. In regards to item number eight, the city is in receipt of $6,119 from the Commonwealth of Virginia Department of Aviation in support of the Suffolk Executive Airport for FY2223. The funds will be used to assist with the replacement of a fueling system dispenser. Adoption of this ordinance will increase the revenues and expenditures of the aviation facilities fund budget by $6,119. A local cash match in the amount of $6,119 is provided for in the aviation funds, facilities fund budget for FY2223. In regards to item nine, the city received $198,455.05 from the Hampton Roads Sanitation District for the purchase and installation of an inclusive playground at Cypress Park. HRSD will in return acquire a utility easement at Cypress Park. Adoption of this ordinance will increase the revenues and expenditures of the capital projects fund budget by the $198,455.05. No local match is required. In regards to item 10, the city has received a donation of personal property from Tidewater Medical Transport for two binder lifts totaling $1,574. A binder lift allows fire and EMS to safely lift and assist patients of any size.
If there are no questions about the items, a motion would be in order to approve the consent agenda as presented. Council? Councilman Bennett?
Move for approval.
Got a motion for approval, Councilman Bennett, Councilman Johnson?
Second.
Second from Councilman Johnson. Is there any discussion of the motion? Hearing none, council members prepare to vote. Please cast your vote. Madam Clerk, please record the vote.
Motion is approved by a vote of seven to zero.
We now move to public hearings. Our first public hearing is an ordinance authorizing the acquisition of permanent and/or temporary easements, either by agreement or condemnation, for the North Fifth Street Drainage Project. Mr. Manager, please provide an overview.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, Members of Council, Robert Lewis, Director of Public Works will provide the overview.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor, Members of Council. This is one of those good news stories. We kind of reviewed the CIP earlier today, and I believe there was a question talking about some of the neighborhood projects. This is one of those neighborhood projects. The vast majority of those projects that we do, we're actually able to do those in existence right away and do not require any type of easements or right-of-way other things. This one, however, again, this is part of that village initiative, community initiative, and we are currently in the process of actually constructing this. Again, it includes closing the storm drainage along the street, putting curb and gutter in, and again, generally resurfacing the street and making a much nicer street. Again, this is just kind of a quick overview of where this is. This is on the North Fifth Street end, and as I said, generally, we stay within right-of-way. But in this particular case, one of the outfall systems for this existing is a ditch that kind of goes across country between a couple of properties, across a church property. In order to us to have the legal rights to construct this and maintain it in the future, we're just asking for authorization from council this evening to go out and acquire this right-of-way easement that's necessary to do that. And with that, following the public hearing, should there be any questions, I will certainly be available to answer those for you.
Thank you, Mr. Lewis. Before we open the public hearing, Madam Clerk, please explain the timing system.
This is a public hearing, and each speaker is asked to provide their name and their address, and will receive three minutes to offer their comments.
This is a public hearing. Will the first speaker please come forward and provide their name and address? Do we have anything, anyone present who would like to speak to this ordinance? Hearing no additional speakers, the public hearing is now closed. Council, an ordinance has been presented for consideration, and a motion would be in order. Vice Mayor Ward?
Move to approve.
Got a motion for approval from Vice Mayor Ward. Councilman Johnson?
Second.
Second from Councilman Johnson. Is there any discussion in the motion? Hearing none? I'm sorry? Councilman Bennett?
One question, please.
Yes, sir.
So mainly, it is literally an easement over top of an existing ditch, so practically, we're getting the rights to go in there and put this in and maintain it in the future. The real result is generally that ditch is going to be closed, and the church is actually going to gain access to some property that today they otherwise cannot use because it is an open drainage way.
Very good. Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
Okay, we have a motion for approval and a second. Are there any other comments before we vote? Hearing no others, council members prepare to vote. Please cast your vote. Madam Clerk, please record the vote.
The motion is approved by a vote of seven to zero.
Our next public hearing is an ordinance to reconsider previously approved zoning, RZN 2022-4, conditional, in order to rezone and amend the official zoning map of the City of Suffolk, in order to amend the previously approved proffered conditions for the Bennetts Creek Quarter Development Zoning Map 12, parcels 32 asterisk one, 32 asterisk two, 32 asterisk three, 32 asterisk four, and 32 asterisk CH asterisk one. Account numbers 306004377, 306004378, 306004379, 306004380, and 306004381. This is RZN 2022-4, conditional, and this item was continued from the January 18th, 23 City Council meeting. Mr. Manager, please provide an overview.
Yes, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Members of Council, Kevin Wine, Director of Planning and Community Development, will provide this after court.
Thank you, Mr. Manager, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Members of Council. As you recall, we're, there we go. As you recall, at your January 18th, 2023 meeting, just a little under a month ago, you voted seven to zero to table reconsideration of this conditional rezoning application. Just to bring you up to speed on what this, what application you're actually reconsidering. Going back to June 1st, 2022, RZN 2022-004 was passed by City Council, proven amendments to proffers two, three, and five from a previously approved amended rezoning, RZN 2020-001. In essence, what that proffer amendment did, the key consideration there, was to modify one of the proffers that held the developer to 168 single-family units or 111 townhomes or condominium-style units by right before the capacity was increased at the Bridge Road and Shoulders Hill Road intersection. Essentially, this increased from the equivalency of 111 units at that time to 186. There were some other proffers amended, but I won't really delve too much into those. As you recall, this is for the Bennetts Creek Quarter project development that is currently under construction off of Shoulders Hill Road. It is in our northern growth area and part of our inner ring suburban use district. Originally, this property was rezoned back in 2018. It was rezoned from RR, that was our Rural Residential Zoning District, to RU, Residential Urban Zoning District, for the purpose of constructing up to 417 total units. As you can see, some of these condo units are already in place, as are some townhomes on the site. What you have before you this evening from the developer is a request to modify the existing proffer, specifically proffer number three. That is what we have on our screen here. But previously, the developer was allowed to gain 186 certificates of occupancy before construction of that intersection. That was a 75-unit increase over what was previously permitted. So moving forward, what they're requesting is the release of COs on an annual basis, not to exceed certain amounts. So for instance, 56 new dwelling units could be issued as certificate of occupancy in 2023, with another 48 being issued in 2024 for a cumulative amount of 104 units at the end of 2024, with an additional 82 being issued in 2025. That would be a cumulative amount of 186 units by the end of 2025. The remainder of any outstanding COs there could be issued in 2026. So that is what the developer is recommending, or is requesting as a part of this modification reconsideration. Staff has evaluated this proffer amendment up against the Unified Development Ordinance as it relates to adequate public facilities, and our traffic engineering division has reviewed it in accordance with 31601 of the Unified Development Ordinance, and is recommending denial based on the capacity not being in that intersection today. So with that being said, that concludes the presentation I have for you on this item this evening, and I will stand by at the conclusion of the public hearing to address any questions you may have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wine. Before we open the public hearing, Madam Clerk, please explain the timing system.
This is a public hearing, and each speaker is asked to provide their name and their address. We will have a 10-minute period for the proponents, a 15-minute period for those in opposition, and then an additional five-minute period for rebuttal.
This is a public hearing. Will the first speaker please come forward and provide their name and address? And this is to speak in favor of this ordinance.
Good evening, Mayor Dooman, Vice Mayor Ward, City Manager Moore, and the rest of the council. My name is John Napolitano. My address is 1492 South Independence Boulevard, Virginia Beach. I know there are people here this evening who were opposed to the request in front of council tonight, and there's people here who are in favor as well. Bennetts Creek Quarter is made up of a lot of families, and this is the hour of dinner hour and homework with the kids and things, so a lot of them, it's tough for them to get here, but I do know council has received numerous emails from residents out there requesting that you approve this this evening. I know that there is a relatively new group in town called Care for Suffolk. I went to their website because I like to see what's going on. And I read on there, one of the things that said, "We understand growth and change are important, but we want to see the city grow and change in a responsible way." And I think everybody in here feels the same way, including myself, the developer. Cities need to grow, but they do need to grow in a responsible way. As a developer, I hope that when I bring my next community forward, I'll be afforded the opportunity to sit and talk with them and get their input as well, just as we do with other people that we work with as we're designing or bringing a community forward. I did find a white paper on their website from Tom Ryan, and I know that he's here this evening, in fact, we chatted earlier, and I am not here to criticize it at all. In fact, the facts that he has in there are pretty damn accurate. But I do feel that there are some facts not mentioned that he may not be aware of, and a few things I would like to emphasize. You know, on the first page, it says to rezone and amend, which makes it sound like this is a rezoning, but he did clarify that on page two that this rezoning and community are already approved. Now, I'm not sure if everybody really understands this, so I do want to try to clarify that. Yes, this property was approved back in 2018. Yes, we've come forward to get some things changed, because over time, things do change, and sometimes things need to get adjusted, but we've never changed the density, we've never changed the zoning, we've never changed the mix of units or anything like that. So we've never come back this, tonight. Let's see, as far as proffer scheduled, excuse me, I missed something here. This is just simply a proffer modification this evening. And he mentioned in there about the, and Mr. Wine mentioned too, about the 56 units in 23 to 48 and 24 and so on. And that's how far out we scheduled this to try to keep this community moving. With the economy the way it is, we certainly hope we can even achieve those numbers. He did mention that both parties agreed in 2018 that only 111 COs would be issued until the intersection construction was complete. But what he may not be aware of is that that agreement resulted, that resulted in a proffer was based on a schedule provided by the city saying that that road would be complete around March of 2022, which is almost a year ago at this point. In March of 2022, we had not reached our 111 COs at that point, so the timing that we had worked out was correct. He also points out that there is no right-turn lane into the community at Lake Cock Lane, as two of them spoke about a little bit earlier, and absolutely correct it's not. The reason that it's not there, it was approved on my plans, and I was going to install it, but the city came to me because they knew that, number one, they had to gain right-of-way from Rodman's, and I had to get some, and if I put that turn lane in, they were just going to tear it out and move it over. So they came to me rather than wasting money and asked if I would pay the city for what it would have cost me, and they would incorporate it in their project. We did not, we have paid it now, and I see that it's on the agenda for later tonight, but we weren't allowed to even bring it to you until, I believe, the fund had to be set up, I guess the bank account or something, for that project had to be set up before you all could accept it. So that's why there was a delay between 2018 and when we actually brought that forward. He also mentioned that it was in writing that we would not come back to council and request additional units, and this is the one issue I do have to question, because I don't recall such a document, nor would I ever give up my right to come back to council. Our company's been doing business for 46 years, and we have always honored our commitments, and I'm sure that we would have never, I mean, we never would have agreed to something that was just open-ended, that you could only have so many units until the road's done, but we don't know when the road's going to get done. I mean, there was a lot of discussions, and there was a schedule that was involved, and that's what we worked off of in good faith. But this is not really about the proffer itself. We're all in a very unusual situation, a situation either the city's been in or we have ever been in, and that is that an agreement was made based on a schedule that was out there. We all did our homework, we all did our work, we sat down, we scheduled out the community as to when things would go in, and for whatever reason, one side was unable to perform their part of the bargain. To me, it was kind of like a contract. Now, I know a lot of people are going to say, "Well, you know, that's business, and that happens, and yeah, you take your chances," but you know, I disagree with that statement because I never felt that I was taking chances when I was working in good faith with the city, because I always knew that they were working in good faith with me as well. But when you get right down to it, it's really not even about that. It's about the residents that live there. There is infrastructure in place, as I said, that we put in. There is infrastructure in place, as I said, that we put in that was programmed as part of this. And, you know, that all laid out from the very beginning with the road construction. Now, through no fault of ours or the residents that live there, they may be stuck with added expenses, and quite honestly, that's not fair to them. They're, you know, they too are tax-paying citizens, just like everybody here this evening, who are either for or against us. And I realize that this is going to add traffic to that intersection. I get that, I understand it. But the percent that it's going to add over the next four years by doing this in increments is very, very minimal. The new proffer before you this evening is a good compromise to fix a situation that none of us have ever been in and none of us wanted to be in. So on behalf of the residents that live in the community, we ask that you support the request and vote in favor tonight. Before I conclude, I do want to say this. Last month, at the end, I did make some comments that maybe were a little bit out of line to the Care for Suffolk folks, and I realize that it was a long, frustrating evening, but I do want to apologize to them. I've spoken with them earlier this evening. With that, I thank you all for your service to this city, and I'm available for any questions that you may have.
Thank you. We have our next speaker to speak in favor. Do we have anyone here to speak in favor of this ordinance? We've got about another two minutes and some change for proponents. Okay, hearing none, we will go to the 15 minutes allocated for opposition. Do we have anyone to speak in opposition?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, City Manager, Council. My name is Thomas Ryan. I live at 119 Suffolk Meadows Boulevard. I really don't want to do this. You've all read my emails. I've been up here before, talking in opposition to this. You know, you've read the stuff on the website of Care for Suffolk. I don't want to be that guy, but somebody has to speak for the citizens of Suffolk. I'm very conflicted regarding the recent actions by the Suffolk City Council. While I understand the economic development is an essential component of Suffolk's positive growth, I feel that many recent decisions to approve developments fly in the face of Suffolk's United, I'm sorry, Unified Development Ordinance and should never have been approved. You've heard all the reasons why this project does not meet the Adequate Public Facilities Ordinance of Suffolk's Unified Development Ordinance, Section 31601, which states that it ensures the public facilities needed to support new development need to meet or exceed the level of LOS standards established by the comprehensive plan of this section. I'm going to jump around here a little bit, because Mr. Napolitano did a very good job of expressing what I had already written. But I will say that on June 1, 2022, he came in front of you to request 75 additional units. And at that meeting, Mr. Fawcett spoke in great detail why it should not be approved in extreme detail, and I agreed with everything he said at that night. And it was all factual, it wasn't his opinion. And then, before you voted, council voted on this. Mr. Duman stated his thoughts regarding any future requests for additional units on this project, and I quote, "And you can put this on record. From my standpoint, I can't see doing any more units until that thing is done." And he went, "Done, done." And he was referring to the noted intersection work at Shoulders Hill and Bridge Road. Council still voted seven to one to approve that, with Roger Fawcett being the lone opposition vote. While I find it very contradictory that council is actively working to engage the citizens of Suffolk for their feedback in the development of the 2045 Comprehensive Plan while at the same time ignoring the tenants of our current Comprehensive Plan, when you took your oath of office and accepted your current role within Suffolk government, you promised to do what's in the best interest of the citizens of Suffolk and obey the laws which govern our city. When you vote to approve or deny any application for development or rezoning, you also are making a promise to the citizens of Suffolk that you are doing so in their best interest. Additionally, when you give your word as a public official, as you did on June 1, 2022, stating that you oppose with good reason approving any additional units on this project until the noted work is completed, the citizens of Suffolk expect you to honor those statements. And to those who did not voice any concerns at that meeting regarding the request for additional units, even though it flew in the face of our established law, I'm equally concerned. Silence is no longer an option. I am asking you to respect the regulations we have in place today and deny reconsideration of RZN 2022-004. I ask you that you show the citizens of Suffolk here tonight you are listening to us and that you, and that our voices are being heard. Thank you very much.
We have our next speaker to speak in opposition.
Christopher Dove, 852 Colonel Lee Drive, Suffolk, Virginia. Ditto. The traffic issues have been well-spoken of. What has not been spoken of is the public facilities for schools. Currently, the school that provides elementary services is Creekside for that facility. They do not meet the minimum level standard of service. I'm surprised the planning department did not point that out to you. And additionally, Nansman Suffolk High School does not meet the minimum level of service required by both the UDO and the Comprehensive Plan. Section 31601, Adequate Public Facilities, says that the purpose and intent pursuant to Virginia Code Sections 1522240, 1522280, 1522283, and 1522296, the purpose and intent of this section is, and number four, to ensure that adequate public facilities needed to support new development are available concurrent with the impacts of such development. Also, it states in the section for advancement of capacity, as I said, you cannot accept advances of capacity until you have a complete commencement date and a completion date. There is no commencement date for the replacement for any of these schools. These schools are overcapacity in accordance to the directives you approved. Follow the law. Do not allow additional housing until you have the capacity for the students. We're overcrowded now, we don't need you to go ahead and compound the issue. Thank you.
Our next speaker, please, to speak in opposition.
Good evening, Mayor and Vice Mayor, City Council and City Manager. My name is Stephanie Stefkovich, and I reside at 119 Suffolk Meadows Boulevard. And I thank you for the opportunity to speak in opposition to this proffer tonight. Mr. Napolitano, I'm not sure if I said that right. Anyway, he did a really good job explaining everything that we had gone back and looked at the meeting in June online, and, you know, we were really kind of shocked at how everything really developed, but both Mr. Wine and Mr. Lewis both, you know, recommended denial for that proffer at that time for 75 certificate, additional certificate of occupancy. So, you know, I totally agree with Mr. Fawcett. You know, we live there, it is a mess. And I can only imagine, I think yesterday, they closed a lane up there for some construction. It was mayhem, just awful. And, you know, I feel like in the UDO, the guidelines, you know, we want to reduce, and I think reduce or prevent congestion on public streets, and I think this really just increases it more and more, basically, you know, it's our responsibility, you know, we elected you guys to follow the, take the responsibility, for the responsibility to look out for our best interests. And living there, I feel, I feel like this proffer is not in anybody's best interest that lives in and around that intersection. I'm sorry that it's delayed, and I'm sorry there is a financial impact on an HOA fees, but I don't think that should preclude the safety of your constituents. So I, I hope tonight you take the, Mr. Wine's advice to, to recommend, you know, recommending denial on this. And also, I think, in my opinion, that approval of this proffer tonight would be irresponsible and also reflect poorly on your citizens in the city. And with that, I thank you very much for your time, and I hope that you, you do not approve this proffer tonight. Thank you.
And our next speaker to speak in opposition.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, City Council, Mr. Moore, constituents, Kevin. Selena Thornton Manuel, I reside at 1921 Pete Mount Road, Suffolk, Virginia. I'm here on behalf of Parkside at Bennett's Creek HOA. I am the president of that association, and we will be affected by this development if it is approved. Currently, you spoke, Mr. John, of a right-hand turn. I did not hear anything of a left-hand turn on Shoulders Hill Road going into Lake Cock Lane. That is a very dangerous intersection. I come down Shoulders Hill Road every day, almost hitting cars trying to make a left-hand turn out of Lake Cock Lane headed towards Bridge Road. There needs to be a red light at that intersection. Also, if you put in more homes into that development, it's only one way in and one way out, going to Lake Cock Lane without going extending to Albercon Drive. Albercon Drive extends into the Balmoral Neighborhood, which will overflow onto the Frederick Street, which will take you in front of North Suffolk Library onto Bennett's Creek Park Road. It's already a nightmare, one way in and one way out on that road. And additionally, I don't think you have taken into consideration of the other developments already under construction on Bob White Lane, which will put more traffic onto Shoulders Hills Road. It's just going to cause more congestion over there. So I thank Tom and Chris for speaking on the overcrowding of the schools, and also, we need to get the Bridge Road and Shoulders Hill intersection complete so we can avoid the traffic issue. It's a nightmare over there. And also, I received word tonight that one of my residents was killed this weekend on Bridge Road. So it's, it's a dangerous area, and you want to put more additional homes without the proper infrastructure. So highly, please consider this issue. Thank you.
Our next speaker to speak in opposition. Is there anyone else present who would like to speak in opposition to this ordinance? Hearing none, we have, excuse me, did you want to speak, ma'am?
Good evening. My name is Evelyn Jones. I live at 4921 Fennell Lane, and that's F-E-N-N-E-L-L, in Suffolk, in the Glen Forest subdivision off of Bob White Lane. I am here to represent my neighbors of Glen Forest, which happen to be more senior than junior. And most of them have built those houses and been living there since Glen Forest was a subdivision. It is turning into be a really terrible, terrible situation with all these houses. We have a subdivision of Bob White, which is just now starting, and we'll have 377 more houses to dump off onto Shoulders Hill Road. Yesterday, I had an appointment with my doctor over in Bell Harbor. I should be able to make it there in more than enough time if I leave my house 30 minutes early. Well, we're only talking five miles. I was late to my appointment because of the congestion at the intersection for this subdivision and the continuing construction along Shoulders Hill Road there at Bridge Road. Until these things are corrected, we do not need any more houses out there. We don't need the ones we've got. I think it's criminal to allow more people to buy houses out there, build more houses out there, until you get the infrastructures to where they can handle all that stuff. Now, the lady that just preceded me, she was talking about one of her neighbors. Well, in Bob White, on Bob White Lane, years ago, I mentioned before this August group that we needed more access or we were going to have a death. And I was told by one of the councilmen at that time, or asked if we had ever had a death in there. And I said, "No, we had not." And I was told, "Well, we won't worry about it until it happens." Well, it has happened. We had a death last year because first aid equipment could not get onto Bob White Lane and to the person's house, and they died without medical assistance. So we've had one so far. And like I said, my neighborhood is not getting younger. We have new, younger people coming in, but like myself, we don't have young people. And the majority of the people that live there built those houses. So you all need to look at what's around, not the immediate area where the construction is. You need to look. Shoulders Hill Road was a nice country road once upon a time. We didn't have but a stop sign at Nansman Parkway and a stop sign on Bridge Road, and between the two, there was nothing else except Deerfield and my subdivision off of Bob White Lane. That was all. Now, I can't move without running into houses. Please, please, do not approve anymore. We don't need it right now until you can figure out a way to fix the problem out there. Thank you.
Okay, that concludes the time for opposition. We do have a five-minute rebuttal period.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Let me address a couple of things. First of all, the schools. When we went through to rezoning, there was a proffer for the elementary, the middle, and the high school. You can only accept a proffer if there is a CIP in place for future schools. We came back because the middle school and the elementary school, the new ones opened about a month after our rezoning. So the capacity is there because of those two new schools. We still pay a proffer for the high school, which goes into a fund to help build a new high school. You know, I hear what everybody is saying, and I, and I hear this a lot, but if you talk to the experts who study this stuff and study growth, infrastructure follows growth. You don't build roads that nobody's there. You don't build schools when kids aren't there yet. It is, it's, I know it's very simple to say, "Let's not build something until the school is there," but you got to have the funds to build it, and the funds to build it come from the taxpayers, from their property taxes and things like that. So that's with the schools. We are within our guidelines, because again, the two of the schools have plenty of capacity, and the high school, we are paying a proffer towards. As far as the UDO goes, to my knowledge, that's As far as the UDO goes, to my knowledge, I don't think that's a law on the books. It is the guideline, and they do follow it. The staff does follow it, and usually I am not permitted to do things that are not in the UDO, and I understand that. When we come before you, we try to make sure that we're addressing everything, such as the schools. If there's a proffer allowed, if there's no proffer allowed, we can't come before you. But you all, as council, have the ability to make a decision that is not necessarily coinciding with the UDO. You're here to look at the overall situation. This is a unique situation. I hear what everybody's saying, and I get it. I do. I seriously do. And when we made the commitment in 18, I never thought I'd be standing here tonight having this discussion with everybody. That road was ready to go. It was getting funded. They were getting ready to get right-of-way, everything else. What delayed it, I don't know, but people should not be penalized for that. You know, they say that, well, you know, they're going to have to pay more HOA funds, and they're right. But I would almost bet that if anybody here lived in that community, they might have a little bit of a different opinion about having to pay more HOA funds for something that they did not have any responsibility to, nor we. I mean, I hate to say it, but the city didn't perform like they were supposed to in this particular situation. It happens, and I understand that. I'm not pointing fingers at anyone, but the residents that live there who are taxpayers also should not be penalized for this. We're not asking you to just lift it and lift it off and let's, you know, let's go. You know, we sell 100 houses next year. We're trying to do this incrementally to keep the community vibrant, because a dead community in the city doesn't help the city at all, and these are taxpayers. So the schedule we put together, we felt was very conservative. We are willing to stand by that. We proffered it. We will stand by it. I know certain people will be watching us to make sure that we do, and we are committed to that. And either we're going to build the thing out, and the road will be built, or the road's going to be finished and the proffer goes away anyway. So I really appreciate, on behalf of the neighborhood out there and all, and as I said, I hear what everyone's saying, and I get it. I understand it. But this is a very unique situation. When we came back in June, we were trying to come back to get the whole thing lifted, and for a lot of different circumstances and all, what came out is what came out at that time. But some other issues have come up, other things that people may not have been aware of and things, and that's why we came back at this point to try and make this happen. Plus, too, in June, the road has been pushed back even further on the schedule from that. So again, I ask for your support tonight. I understand what everybody's saying. I appreciate them coming out to speak their views, but I think this is a very unique situation for the city and for us, and would ask that you all support this and help the community out. Thank you.
We have 41 seconds left in the rebuttal period. If anyone would like to come up and make a brief comment during rebuttal. Hearing no additional speakers, this public hearing is now closed. Counsel and ordinance has been presented for consideration. You need to keep in mind, this item comes on a motion to reconsider, and the applicant provided a new amended proffer statement during the public hearing at January 18th, 2023 council meeting. And there are basically three options. A motion is needed to either, one, approve ordinance number 220060 in its original form, that's without the amendments, approve the ordinance number 220060 with the new amended proffer statement, or to deny ordinance number 22060 altogether. So if I understand this correctly, an ordinance to approve number 220060 would basically be no change in what has currently been proffered. Is that correct, Mr. Attorney?
Yes, so what you have before you is there was a motion to reconsider passed, which means that at this present time, ordinance number 22-0-060 is no longer approved. So you either need to reapprove it. So you have the two options you had back in June of 2022. You can either approve it, or you could deny it, or at the January 18th, 2023, the property owners have asked you to substitute Exhibit B, which is the voluntary proffer statement, with a new voluntary proffer statement that they provided at that meeting. So that would be your third choice, is to accept and substitute out Exhibit B.
Okay, and I have one other question. Is there an ability to amend anything in the proffer statement that is being presented to us this evening? And if so, what would that process be?
So proffer statements are, proffers are voluntary. They are made by the property owners. So the property owner can provide you with an amended proffer statement, but at this point, there's nothing, it's not like a CUP. City Council can't ask for amendments to the proffer. It has to be something that is voluntarily given by the property owner.
So could there be a suggestion, and then the applicant provide that option to amend the proffer or not, if that makes any sense? I'm just trying to get all the possibilities out there before we get started.
So the public hearing is now closed, and part of the UDO says that based on the comments that are made, a applicant can provide an amended proffer statement based on those comments. So that would be an option for the applicant to present one, but it would be totally up to the applicant to do that.
I understand. Okay, does counsel have any questions before we start any discussion? Or hearing none? I'm sorry. Councilman Fawcett has popped in there first.
Yeah, I just wanted to unpack this a little bit for a second, because, you know, this has been a drawn-out process that we started way back when, it seems like. And the applicants come to us on a couple of occasions to get some amended proffers here, to be able to extend the amount of units that he has in that development that he's doing over there at Polatano's handling. A couple of things. There is going to be a light put up, and it's going to be, this whole thing is a moving target, because, believe me, I'm as frustrated as anybody, because I can remember when we started working on this road project, and it's been probably four or five years ago, and then they started getting the funding. And it's been one delay after another, and utilities, I think, has been the biggest delay lately, trying to get power companies and the phone companies and the cable companies and all that mess moved. And if you go out there on the corner of Shoulders Hill in 17, you'll see where the old gas station was, digging a lot of stuff up and trying to get new piping in there and so on and so forth. It's been a little frustrating because the road project has moved so slowly. I don't think it's any one person's fault. I just think it's a fault of a lot of things. We've gone through a plethora of changes in the last three years. I mean, you know, we had the pandemic, which I hate blaming the pandemic because that's not the total thing, but it's been a slow-moving target. The problem we're going to have is the target is now being moved. Utilities are going on, road closures are going on, trench holes are being dug across Shoulders Hill. That is a nightmare for me, because I just spent $90 getting my front end aligned because of the great, nice big hole there they dug, it trenched out across the road at the old gas station, which did not make me happy. And I've brought up to the manager on a couple of occasions that we need to hold these contractors' feet to the fire to put the road back the way they got it. Now, we realize that road's going to get dug up, and it's going to be, there's going to be some traffic problems there. There's no getting around it. We're going to have to deal with the traffic problems as the road gets corrected. But it is coming. I guess there's a lot of things like that someone could say is coming. Now, coming down to, as far as where he's talking about Laycock Lane, he's right. If the city come in there, if you had to put a right-hand turn in, we'd have just dug it up, and it would have been just wasted funding. The lady that's come up and spoke, one of my constituents out there that is so kind to me, she is right. There is no left turn right now going into Laycock Lane. Right now, that's the only way in and out, unless you do go through the neighborhood and come out onto Bennett's Patchard Park Road by the library and then come up to the light. So it makes it a little difficult. My argument's been, from the get-go, is we are going to have a roadway, a secondary roadway that's going to be another exit out of there and an entrance also, and it's going to be a Richard Bennett's Parkway, which is now Meadow Brook Lane, which is nothing but, nothing but a road, dirt road and rock right now. That's going to get me corrected here, because there is a developer that's going to come in there and put some senior homes in there on Shoulders Hill Road, and he's going to make those road corrections. So there's a two-piece component here with Mr. Polatano and Brian Rowe that's going to put his additional things in there, and that's going to help us get a second exit out onto that roadway. But it's not going to be anytime soon. I was going to bring Robert Lewis up to just briefly talk about the road construction that's going on there and what he can convey to the crowd, what he thinks the timeline's going to be for that road construction, because I'm telling you, it is a safety nightmare. No getting around it. I dealt with Mr. Polatano on a lot of occasions. He builds a good product out there. The timing couldn't be worse, and it's not all his fault. It's just a whole plethora of things. And Robert, maybe you can come up, and you can explain why we've been in such a delay, if we've been in a delay, what's caused the delay, what we're looking like as we're going along, and just tell us, and then I'll come back at you.
Yes, sir. So thank you very much. So in 2018, when this project originally conceived, the world looked a lot different than it does today. And if you recall, we were moving along. We had funding in place. We were proceeding on with finishing the design, buying the right-of-way necessary, and getting ready to go to construction. And then late 2019, early 2020, the world changed. Again, I don't want to blame everything on COVID, but the fact is, the world did change. And it seems like there's about a year and a half, two years in there, that's just all, to me, is all kind of a blur. Things just slowed way down. They didn't progress, and economics changed dramatically during that period of time. I will tell you, this project was actually put to bid, and we received a favorable bid back in January of 2022. Here I am standing in front of you in February of 2023, and we have not given notice to proceed. The issue is there are the utilities. The day we bid that project, the utilities had guaranteed us in the next 30 days, everything would be out of the way, we'd be ready to go. The proverbial check has been in the mail every month since then. We keep getting promises. We'll have it done by the end of the month. We'll have it done by the end of the month. We are still having a couple of facilities out there. We're trying to move. Unfortunately, we do not have a lot of sway over the utility companies, the horizons of the world and so forth. They have a lot of autonomy and the state law, and that's just the way it is. So we're doing that. The good thing is, at this point, the bidder, the successful bidder to this project, has agreed with the city thus far. He's agreed to hold his bid, and we'll go to work as soon as we give him notice to proceed. Again, I would love to tell you that's going to be by March the 1st. We just depended upon getting those last utilities. I have an individual in my staff that contacts those companies at least once a week, and sometimes I think I tell them to go call them daily, find out what's going on, poke them along. So again, that's the biggest thing. We're ready to move, but we are about a year and a half behind schedule on this project. As you noted, just a whole plethora of reasons. Can't really point to any one issue, but the utility does seem the biggest thing that's holding us up there.
So I've, you know, we've seen Verizon out there in the last couple of days doing very diligently, working to try to get those underground lines moved so that things can move along. The second part of this is going up from Laycock up to, which is Meadow Brook now, is where it's going to stop. I mean, that's another, probably 18 months away, if not two years, I would say. Just guessing.
Again, that's dependent upon that next development. Yes, sir.
Right. So in the statement Kevin Wine gave, is you all stand on the fact that because the roadways are not adequate, and it is a safety issue, you are denying this specific application, correct?
Mr. Fawcett, we are bound by as city staff to follow the requirements of the Unified Development Code, including Section 601, and as such, as we do the analysis, we do not find that adequate public facilities are in place at this time. So therefore, we are bound to make the recommendation for denial. As to what impact that may have if the project were to move forward, again, that is a decision that I'll leave to council. We, Public Works, will make this project happen. We will deal with whether issues come along. But again, I'm bound to give you that recommendation because of the guidelines that's in the code.
I got you. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
City Attorney, if I could ask you a question, based on the fact that there is not adequate facilities, and that has come up, are we, okay, legally, to go either forward or not go forward based on that? Or is it, how do we play into this? I want to make sure I'm on the right side of the rule here.
Well, I'll give you a general answer about rezonings. Rezonings are a legislative decision that is made by this body. So it is, it is a change, so a rezoning is a change to the zoning law for this specific property. So it is a legislative decision made by this body.
So we have, even though it's in the UDO, the way it may define some things, we have the right as a body to laterally move in the best interest that we feel with this actual request. Am I right with that?
There are certain limitations that may be on your authority, but generally, the legislative body can make legislative decisions, and that's as far as I can give you an answer without going into a situation where we have attorney-client privilege.
Okay. Because I'm just really concerned with the fact that, you know, we're 18 months away, maybe you better get the roadway in there, and the occupants that are at that facility now are going to get penalized. It's kind of a no-win situation here, no matter how you cut it. But I may come back. Some other council members might have some questions, but I haven't been comfortable with the project in terms, the project's a good project, but I haven't been comfortable with what I see traffic-wise out there in the roadway, because I can't get out either. So, I mean, I'm in the same boat. However, you know, we sometimes have to give and take a little bit, but I'll listen if any other council members have any decisions or questions on it.
Counsel, any questions, comments, or a motion? Councilman Rector?
Mr. Lewis, can you bebop back to the podium one more time, please?
Be more than once.
After the utilities get moved, which is the holdup now, and you give the order to proceed, what is the timeline for completion of the Shoulders Hill Bridge Road intersection?
So I do not have that exact number memorized, but I believe it's about 18 months, and we are ready to give notice to proceed as soon as we get verified that the utilities are out of the way. That's actually a requirement from the Department of Transportation before we can move forward and start expending their money, as we have to clear right-of-way, which includes utilities.
So if the utilities got moved in the next month or so, that project could potentially be completed at about the 50% point of what the applicant is asking for the proffer to be amended to in terms of his timeline?
If everything were linear, yes, sir.
And I understand we don't live in a linear world, but we have to have some basis to start with, so thank you for that.
Yes, sir.
Counsel, any other comments? Questions? Counselperson Butler Barlow?
I just, a point of clarity. So we are not increasing the number of units. This is, the number of units has been set since 2018, I believe. I just want to make that clear, that we're not increasing the number of units with this particular vote. I just, I think that that's unclear. We're not increasing the density. We're going with the same, okay. I just wanted to make that point, you know, out loud so that we all understand that.
Councilman Johnson?
So the-
So the number of, I'm going to piggyback off of Ms. Barlow for a minute. The number of units, tell me if I'm wrong, is 186 total for the next three years, correct? 186 total? And the number of units we've already built is in this project? What was the total number in the beginning? I'm trying to read my paperwork here. It's a little discombobulating. In 2018, when it was approved-
The total number is 406 at the end of the day.
So how many have been built already?
So far, we've built 100 and, my math is probably going to be off, but close to 180.
So 186 in the next three years, and then the balance will come after that.
Yes, sir.
Is there any prospect of what you've asked for, moving these units backwards one year to the time that the intersection is actually built? Which will make our life easier. We see what I'm saying. If he's going to be, if we're going to be complete in 18 months with the intersection, and we, we back it up to the, start the 56 net in one year, and then the 48, you know what I'm saying? Just go forward a year. You're still, you're going to lose money to a point, too. I'm, I'm trying to come up with an alternate plan here. My concern, honestly, is the adequate roads. I tell you, and it's all over the city right now, and I think we, as a council, have to recognize that it's kind of time to put the cart before the horse. Nothing to say about you. You're a good developer. You know I respect you, and you know I kind of like you. You're not such a bad guy. That has nothing to do with this, though. This has to do with our city and keeping it growing in the proper way and, and getting the community's trust back so that they know that they come first. I mean, and what we, if we're going to obey the rules, guys, we've got to obey the rules. If the UDA says we can do this, or we change the UDO, we can do specific things. But I'm concerned, timing-wise, I'm sorry, because we've got lots of projects that are going to be coming forward, and we've got to look long and hard at everything that comes forward. I am concerned, so.
And I appreciate your concern, but that's why this is incremental.
But my problem is, if we can move it forward just another year, or reset a little bit so that we actually get the dang thing started.
Well, actually, Mr. Johnson, we hadn't, we just started building out there, but we had not started a building since May of last year.
Right.
Because of this. We had started everything we could start. So we've already been sitting there over eight months with nothing.
And I don't want to continue to postpone you, but I also, the safety issue, like Mr. Fossett said, it is a real dog. I don't go on Shoulders Hill because of it.
I think what Mr. Fossett said, which, which is what changed a lot of things, is the fact that that stoplight will now be going in there, and we know that as a definite. That was, that was a huge change to that road that'll be happening in, in the future, within the next, you know, few years as all of this is going on.
We've got a little dilemma. All right, somebody else can pick up. I'm, I'm still thinking.
Councilman Bennett?
Mr. Politano, you were talking, you said 186 in three years. So what did you think average per year?
Well, Mr. Bennett, what we did, what's in front of you as far as the 56 for 2023, we're probably already behind schedule on that, because we were hoping that this was going to get taken care of back in the late fall. So we're already several months behind on that. What we did was, we sat down and tried to forecast sales. So when you say how many a month, we tried to leave it such that we, we tried, on each of our communities, we tried to sell four per month. In there, there's two communities right now that are going. And so we tried to sit down, just like, just like we did from the very beginning as to when do we put a pool in, when do we do this, when does this amenity go in based on the number of units and with the road to have been built. We did the same thing with this that we're presenting to you tonight. What do we feel are adequate sales? And we're, and we're trying to be very conservative. We're going into a different market, and now the gamble that we're going to take is, we were in a hypermarket. We're now in a slow market. We're committing to this. If a hypermarket starts again next year, we are, we are committed to this and only this. Now, I will say it on the record, I won't be back if the market changes. Because once we get, if you all approve this tonight, we're good through the rest of this community.
Okay. The only reason why I ask you that, so I can clarify, is that you said 186 within three years. And I was just looking at the bill out, how many will be built prior to probably the year, the 18 months that he's saying the road will be completed. That's where I was headed with that.
Well, let's see. If we get the 56, I'll say 56 from now, because we haven't closed any yet in 2023, that are under that. So the 56, and then 48 the following year. So that's 104. I mean, we're a good year, that's probably a good year, year and a half in there.
Okay, thank you.
Vice Mayor Ward?
Yes, Mr. Politano.
I'll just stay here. You and Robert just stay up there.
I just want to understand something.
Yes, sir.
You said that it's not your fault for this delay. Is something, you've been waiting, and you used to wait on other people. What do you do when it's this much delay? Your project keep going on, or what happens?
At this point, we're at a standstill. And I think, you know, as far as the delay, I think Mr. Lewis said it very, very clearly, that, you know, it, it's a circumstance that happens. It, you know, it was on the responsibility of the city because they were building it. But I get it. And, and that's why I said, I'm not pointing any fingers. And I think Mr. Lewis said it very eloquently. The world changed a couple of years ago. All I'm trying to do is, you know, for the residents that are living there, is trying to protect them. Their taxpayers and voters, as well as everybody else in the room. And, you know, this is a situation that nobody anticipated. And, you know, you know, if, if I were standing here in front of you right now, and I had, and it was reversed, if I came in here in 2020 asking you to do that, when you gave me a schedule that said 2022, y'all would throw me out of the room, and rightfully so. But we're here after, when this was supposed to be completed, trying to figure out a way to accommodate what we need and what the city is looking for as well, and a compromise that works for everybody. That's all we're trying to do. I mean, many, many times, there's things that I'd like to do that I can't because of different reasons, UDO and things like that. But this is one that we need your help on.
All right, thank you.
Anyone else before I leave?
Councilman Fossett?
Hold up, hold up, John.
Yes, sir.
I want you to know that I respect what you're doing, and I respect you coming up here tonight and give us in the outlay of what your dilemma is.
Thank you.
And I, and I understand this. And I'm trying to find a fine way to go here to lend something to this. But I got to tell you that because of that roadway, and because I can't even get up 17 on the Shoulders Hill on a good day, and then I encounter traffic coming out of your development, which is Lacob Lane, that not always, but I encounter that traffic coming out of there, and those people turn out of there because they try to find a cut to get in front of the traffic, because it's tight sometimes to do so. So there is some traffic coming out of there. There's no question about it. There's no denying that Shoulders Hill Road is packed. And, and going back to, you know, Bob White is going to inf, it's going to, it's going to affect us heavily here as we go. And then you've got another project behind that coming out there, and it's just going to be difficult. Now, we're going to get some road corrections, and we all know this. And it just, the worst timing for you couldn't be worse than ever. Because you didn't anticipate this. We didn't anticipate it. Nobody did. And the people who moved in there didn't anticipate it. I don't want to be unfair to them, but at the same time, I don't want to be unfair to the other traffic folks and people that travel that road, and particularly the constituents I hear from, because they're important to me.
Sure.
All of those citizens are important to me in the city of Suffolk, no matter where they come from. But particularly, I hear from my constituents. And I get blasted because of that roadway. And I can only tell you, it's going to get worse as the construction goes on. And it breaks my heart that you're in this predicament, your residents are in the predicament, and yes, you made a statement earlier, and you're correct, that you took a gamble, and you had no idea you were going to get in this predicament, and, and nobody could have told you that. I kind of find it a little hard that somebody would have stuck their head out and said, hey, we're going to make a deal here, that the roadway should be done by the time you want to get to your 406 or whatever. And, and you probably moved forward based on that. But there is, there's nothing saying, stipulating. It's a gentleman's agreement, probably between you and whoever.
Now, Mr. Bennett, and Councilman Fossett, I would disagree. I have a schedule given to me by the city.
Well, it's not here. It's not here. I don't see it.
I've got it right here. I've shared it with all of you all in the past.
I'm just making, I'm making a point that I, I'm trying to just tell you.
It was in writing.
Okay. I'm just trying to tell you that I'm not comfortable. And I'm going to lean toward whatever my constituents ask me to do at this point. And this is no reflection on the residents or you whatsoever. This is a, just a conglomerate of a problem. Until we work some of the kinks out, I'm not comfortable. I'm just not. And, and I hope you don't take this personally, and it's not personal to you.
I understand.
It's just that I wish that things would work in more unison than they do, but nothing in this world seems to be doing that at this point. You can't rely on anything. I mean, it's, I mean, you can't go in and sit down at a restaurant and rely on you're going to get waited on because they don't have waiters. I mean, it's a conglomerate of things. You go to order a park for a refrigerator, and we got, get it in two months. Or you can get a washing machine in two, two months or three months. You know, it's, it's troubling. And you fall in that trap a little bit, and my heart breaks that this has come up like it has. I wish it had not. But I will not support this tonight. I just won't. And I just won't support it from the fact that I can't bear the thought that someone's going to get killed out there on that Shoulders Hill Road. I mean, I can't get out of Bennett's Creek Square at a, at a good time. I mean, I fought to get out this afternoon just to come to this council meeting, because I couldn't get a break in the traffic coming down from 17. And it's a big flow of, of traffic out there. And I'm just not, until that Richard Bennett Parkway Road gets in, and we get a light up there, and some of that road correction gets done, I just can't put my hand on this. Because I'm just afraid of, if something happens out there, I'm going to feel bad that I even did this. And I, I got to make a choice. And I don't want you to go away bitter, but I understand if you do. But I'm just telling you my side of it, and that's it.
Tell, let me ask a question. What should I have done differently back in 2018?
I don't have a, I don't have, I don't have an answer for you, because I wasn't back there when you made that decision.
I mean, I'm working with the city. They give me a schedule.
I'm sorry, what was the question?
What, what should I have done differently back in 2018?
Probably not a thing.
When I'm, when I'm working with the city, in good faith, they give me a written schedule. It says the road will be done by here. We agreed to it because of that schedule, and here we are tonight. If I knew this was going to happen, I would have never agreed to that. May not have gotten the rezoning, but I would have never agreed to that. And I think that this is an injustice, for whatever reason and however it's happened, but it's an injustice to the folks that are living there. So before I sit down, any other questions?
I'm sorry, Vice Mayor Ward?
I want to speak to Mr. Lewis, because I'm kind of confused right now. Mr. Lewis, how many projects do we have on Shoulders Hill and 17 now going on?
How many projects? So we have the Shoulders Hill Bridge Road project that's actively underway, ready to go. In the CIP, there is a Phase Two and a Phase Three. And if you recall, you have a redevelopment, a rezoning issue that came back to council a number of months ago, that's actually going to assist us with that Phase Two, and will probably advance some of it while we wait for the funding to come forward to move the next phase, which goes from essentially Lacob Lane down to the elementary school.
Okay. So how many projects do we got coming up on that same area? I'm going somewhere. I want to know, how many projects? Do we have any other projects coming to us now get approved?
Yes, sir. So like I said, there's three on Shoulders Hill Road at this point, then various stages.
So what we doing tonight is just blaming this project for the, for what's crowded? For the traffic?
Oh, no, sir. I'm speaking of road construction projects. As far as development, that might be something we have to ask to plan and direct her.
Well, I want to, I want to know. I mean, who I got to ask? I mean, because what I'm saying, he, I can't get out of the fact that he came up here, 2018, did everything we asked, and the city is, is delaying, somebody's delaying the project. Okay? He done everything we asked, and we got some developers don't do what we asked. But he done everything we asked. Now he was saying we got some more projects on that same area. What I'm saying is that we know we have this situation already. There's nothing we can do to alleviate the traffic, the traffic. Like, I mean, I understand, we already know this coming. Just like when you go down 58, we know how bad that traffic is. We got signs.
Vice Mayor, the manager would like to interject something. No, to answer your question.
Vice Mayor, if I can, as Robert just said, of course, we have the Shoulders Hill 17 project getting ready to start. It's been delayed by private utilities being offset. And of course, some of that might not all be private utilities. Well, as we went through the last several years, hiring people and trying to get work done has been difficult. What we have in the CIP, that takes us down to Lacob, or to the area of the improvements here, or the development. From there, you have, of course, the rezoning that you did a few months ago, which was alluded to, which takes and puts the turn, the, the signal light in and some improvements along the road down at that area. And as you recall, in the CIP that we just went over, in the outer years, that we went over at work session in the outer years, we have Phase Two and Phase Three, which ultimately gets you down to Bennett's Creek Parkway Road, and then ultimately to Pewsville Road.
Yes, sir.
And so they're in the outer years, but it's, it's a phased approach. Those projects haven't, we've put them in the CIP, you know, and we're, you know, trying to plan ahead and get those in. But I don't, those projects haven't been delayed in any way. What's been delayed has been the Shoulders Hill Route 17 work from the private utilities, trying to get them. And, and again, we've gone through several years here that no one planned on. So I hope that clarified what Robert was trying to say.
Okay. Well, like I said, the fact that it's been happening since 2018, I just don't see this 2023. And now we got to wait. I just don't agree with that. All right, thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
Hey, counsel, any other questions or comments? If not, Councilperson Butler Barlow?
Sorry, I had one last question. So Vice Mayor Ward made me think of a question. So we know how many units are proposed in this neighborhood, and we've approved a lot of other neighborhoods along Shoulders Hill Road. Kevin, do we, Mr. Wine, do we have a total number of houses that are approved along Shoulders Hill Road of, you know, that are, that are already in the works in the pipeline?
We do. We maintain a pipeline database. Off the top of my head, I don't know those numbers at this time, but I can provide those to you after this meeting.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, Councilman Johnson?
Kevin, Kevin, one more question, since that's been said. Are these other developments that are going to, are already been approved to move forward, which we should know anyway, but I can't remember things? Are they dependent on the stoplight? Are they dependent on the improvements to the road as well?
So when we evaluate any rezoning request, we are looking to the adequacy of transportation facilities as a part of that. They provide us a traffic impact assessment. And projects that we're aware of at that time, we ensure that they incorporate those volumes into their traffic impact assessment for their proposed future improvements. So, so yeah, when we're aware of projects that are in the pipeline, that they are-
I'm not trying to put you on the spot. I'm just curious, have we approved any projects in the last couple, three years that we should have not approved because of the, that stoplight not being there?
Yeah. Adequate public facilities is a key consideration of any and all rezoning requests. We are, like Robert mentioned, obligated to ensure that adequate public facilities are available prior to our recommendation of approval.
My question, though, is that have we done something to allow some developments that probably should have not been allowed? No? Unfair question, I'm sorry.
I don't believe- I don't believe, not in regards to rezonings.
Right, okay.
By rights, another issue.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? If not, I'll stick my two cents worth in, and then we'll see, see if we get a meeting in the minds as to what decision you'd like to make. I'd like to start with, there's been a lot of talk, a lot of rhetoric, this, that, and everything else. We're talking about one project, that's this project and this application. It stands on its own merit. When Mr. Napolitano came in 2018, part of the staff analysis that had to be addressed was the traffic. The traffic concerns, the traffic that would be generated with the complete buildout of what was being approved. Make no mistake that this development is approved. Not a rezoning. The only thing that we're taking into consideration is the proffer that prohibits Mr. Napolitano from building any more homes until the Shoulders Hill Road 17 intersection is complete. That's it. It's got nothing to do with schools. That's all been taken care of. You know, he's proffered schools, you know, the high school. Matter of fact, when he did it, I don't think with Cherry was done, and then when Cherry came, Cherry was completed, you were able to come back and actually negate that proffer, you know, get relief from that proffer. So it's not a school issue, it's not any other issue, it's not any other, it's not any other adequate facilities concerned. It is strictly traffic. And I, I understand that the citizens are concerned, and they rightfully have a legitimate concern because we're talking about a safety issue. And unlike other issues that you, that we may have to address, safety is one that we cannot take lightly. I believe that Mr. Napolitano came up with a reasonable alternative rather than granting it or staging it. And I understand the circumstances, you know, have, being in business, I understand what happens when the market swings from one way or the other. We got several dozen emails from residents asking us to approve this, and, and I appreciate them responding. I appreciate the folks that are here today, speaking. What bothers me is that there's too many, there's, there's too many variables right now, a little bit more than I was anticipating. I was going to ask Mr. Lewis, I don't, I don't think the building of 48 units, and I might get you up there just to ask, the building of 48 units, how does that affect traffic? How many more trips is that, and is it something significant or not?
Forty-eight units generally would, they generate about 10 trips per day, so it's about 480 additional trips on the roadway. As an overall percentage, it's relatively small. You can always make the argument for the final straw that breaks the camel's back. But again, as I stated before, we will deal with traffic as, as best we can as we build this project, depending on council's direction.
Okay, thank you. So looking at it on the surface, it didn't seem to be an issue with me, but what bothers me is that we don't seem to have a definitive start time, nevertheless a finish time. I mean, by your admission, we're not sure when the utilities will get moved. And I think at that point, it makes it difficult for me to go along with what's here, not because it wouldn't, it would be okay if we knew we'd have utilities moved and we'd be started. But what we're discussing today, we didn't count on in 2018. I don't want to have this discussion in 2026, when we're still not done and all these extra cars are on the road. And we don't have any control over that. I don't think there was anything wrong in the process. I don't think Mr. Napolitano doing anything wrong. I don't think staff did anything wrong. Absolutely nobody acted in bad faith. It's just kind of what happened. But once again, I have an issue supporting this because we're talking about safety, and safety is something that's not negotiable. And because there's not anything, nobody can really give me a definitive answer that we'll have this thing done in 18 months. Could be 24, could be 36, who knows? It just depends. So my way of thinking is, I, I think it's something that we can revisit, man, this is just my opinion, I'm one, I was one vote out of eight, now I'm one vote out of seven. This may be something that we could revisit once we do have some definitive answers. Maybe once the utilities do get moved, and we can say, all right, let's take another look at this. We know without a doubt that this will be complete by this time. I mean, it's already funded, everything's in place, we just have to go through the process. So that's, that's where I am. It's not an easy decision whatsoever, because I believe Mr. Napolitano has always done everything he said that he was going to do. He has always been willing to negotiate, to try to put a deal together, unlike some other folks that we've had to deal with. He's been an asset to the community, builds a good product, but safety is safety. So with that being said, we got three options here, and we can entertain a motion to any one of the three. The first is to approve the ordinance as it is, which means when we leave here today, nothing will be different. Mr. Napolitano will be able to proceed under the, the same criteria that he had before he got here, like it never existed. And, and Mr. City Attorney, correct me if I'm wrong, I don't want to put any more bad information. But I do think that proffer money was proffered way back then, it was just switched because it wasn't used for the turn lanes. So, I mean, I guess you can catch me on technicality. We can approve the ordinance with the new amended proffer, which is what Mr. Napolitano has presented to us, or we can say, just forget about it, you can't do anything. So I don't know what the pleasure of council would be. Councilman Fawcett?
Could I, could I just offer up something here? Versus turning it down, would it be better if we pushed it out and revisited and give some time to see the utilities get started? And I think, you know, I, I don't know what kind of munch you would want to put on it, but to keep it from not moving forward, put some time on it. I, I mean, I would imagine that there, by summer, we should have some utility movement. So this is, you know, already, we're getting ready to go into March.
Mr. Lewis, do you have an idea when we may be able to get an answer? And also, I'll get to the City Attorney while you're coming up there. It's my understanding that we can table anything for any amount of time that we want. Is that correct?
Yes, but if you.
It's always a but.
If you table this, you cannot vote on item number 17 because that proffer will not have been approved, because you have reconsidered that proffer. And so that money cannot be accepted by the city until you either decide to approve it or not approve it.
So if we table it for four months, five months, six, whatever Councilman Fawcett wants, and we get to 17, do we table that as well for the same corresponding time? Or do we just not vote on it?
You would, you would probably just not vote on it, and if, if there are funds that have been turned over to the city, those funds need to be returned to developer.
So it'd be a moot point, it'd be like doing a condition use permit when the rezoning's not approved.
Could those funds come back in the next time we hear this thing?
So, so if you approve the proffer that includes those funds, then the funds will be owed again. But at present, the only obligations on the developer, whatever obligation existed under RZN 2020 001, because this has been reconsidered.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't want to lose the funds, so I want to know if we make the motion to defer this to a later date, I want to be able to bring them funds back on the table at that time to coincide with whatever we approve at that particular time, as is here stated tonight.
So if you table it, you will have, whenever it comes back, whether it's next month, two months, three months, you will have the same options that you have tonight. You can approve the original rezoning, which includes the proffered funds. Or you can approve the rezoning with the substituted proffer statement, or you can deny it altogether.
I got you.
Okay. See, we want to say Vice Mayor Ward's got to.
I'm going to finish them.
Oh, you want to finish, okay.
I wanted to ask Mr. Lewis, Mr. Lewis, I mean, reasonably, I know we can't put a guarantee on this, but the utility people have worked pretty diligently out there. It looks like it's down to the Verizon side of the house. Could, I'm not going to hold you the gun to your head here, but could you not think that by summertime, we would have a reasonable release to start this project? I mean, you ought to know where the utilities are at, at this point, to be able to get a feel for it.
Yes, sir. At this, at this point in time, there is literally one piece of aerial cable that is holding us up. Again, they've been working to try to move that. My best guess, hope, prayer, and anything else I can do is within 60 days, that will be finished and we'll be starting to construct. But again, as you note, that's kind of been delayed for a while anyway, and, and it keeps getting drug out. So I, I can't speak for Verizon, all I can tell you is I believe there's not enough work left that beyond 30 to 45 days, they'll be done and we can move this forward to construction.
So I would like to entertain a motion to move this or defer this to the June 1st, June meeting to come back to be heard, and that'll give us a little bit of flexibility. That gives us almost about 90 days. And then we can take a look at it and see where they're going, and then revisit this. So I would look at the first meeting in June, and I can give that date.
The first meeting in June is on June 7th?
June 7th. So I'd like to make a motion to defer this to June 7th. This particular request.
And we got a motion to table until June 7th. A Vice Mayor Ward?
Second.
Could I? In a second, yes.
I want to make a comment, is that this not the first time that this community have complained about the traffic? And for us to just target this group, this is not the first time. So what I'm saying is that if we know traffic is still going to, development's still being done, traffic is not going to decrease, it's going to still increase. So I, I understand, if we find out this is a, and like, I'm concerned about people's life. I mean, I'm, I'm with it all the way, but if we see this problem, and we had a community come up and talk about the fear, and we just do the same thing? I mean, I don't know if we change the traffic flow or change the, I mean, how, I just don't understand, could we already, this is not the first time they came up. This is not the first time this group is coming up for that same situation, that traffic on Shoulders Hill. So I don't know if anything the city can do, we can do. I, I don't understand that. Now, we can still have projects still coming. That maybe this is me, I don't, it's not coming, it's not coming clear to me like that. And you say we the body that can do things, sometime I think I should think ahead, because I don't understand, you know, we had another problem, Bob White Land. It was traffic. We had Amazon, it was traffic truck. I mean, it's not going away. We're growing, more people, 50,000 people for the last 10 years, 50, it's not going away. So when this, this situation come up, it's like we don't want one or the other, that's not true. I mean, I, I want, I want to see nobody get killed. And the traffic is something that we have just started to deal with. But I just don't feel like, you know, this particular project is causing all what's people coming up for, that's, that's my opinion. Thank you.
Councilman Fawcett?
Just one last thing, I'm going to be done with this. The reason I offer this compromise is because it saves the project. The project's going to go forward eventually. This just buys us a little more time to see where the flow's going, how things are going to get going here. So I, I just feel like this is a good compromise. I think this council should strongly consider this. And then we come back and we get another crack at looking at where things are at, rather than just kill the mayor's project out, and then that creates a different nightmare when we do that. So that was my, my offer motion to, to try to at least do the best we can other than just say no. So that's, that's where I'm at.
Okay, we've got a motion on the floor to table until June 7th from Councilman Fawcett, and a second from our Vice Mayor, Councilman Richter.
Just real quick, Mr. Mayor, a couple of things. You know, obviously, and I agree with Mr. Napolitano, this is an unusual situation, and no matter what we do, there probably no real winners and no real losers in this thing. Mr. Napolitano agreed to the condition back in 2018 based on a schedule that was given to him by the city for the completion of the road. Even if we were to start on the thing today, 18 months from now puts us in 2020, you know, sometime mid to late 2025, which is three years beyond what was originally projected for that to be done. But it is what it is, and there's nothing we can do, do about that. My question would be to Mr. Napolitano, you said that this original schedule, you kind of put this back together back in the fall. If this thing gets deferred until June, and you can't begin any construction until after that, what is this going to do to your proffer timetable? And then, you know, the other thing is, and while you're walking up to the podium, you know, there's kind of a nightmare scenario to this thing as well. You know, from 2018, we've had, you know, a sea change in the economy and how we operate and how things go on. If we stumble into another situation like came about in 2008, in 18 months from now, two years from now, the housing market dies like it did back then, that neighborhood's going to be left half-done, two-thirds done, whatever percentage it's done, been done now, you know, potentially for another six or seven years while everybody waits for the economy to improve. So I'm just throwing that out. I'm, I'm not going to necessarily vote against the delaying of the thing, but you know, there, there are a lot of considerations, and I think that's another consideration we need to take a look at. You know, the other thing is, is, for lack of a better phrase, that I don't want the city to be looked at as an entity that, that doesn't hold up their end of the bargain. But I, I do agree with the safety thing, and then nobody wants any more traffic on Shoulders Hill Road, nobody wants any more traffic on, on Bridge Road. So, you know, like I said, no matter which way we go, there, there are no real winners and there are no real losers in this thing. And I agree with Mr. Fawcett, I don't want to see this project go away. It's approved, I think it ultimately will be good for the city, at least right now. Any information that you get from the Virginia Association of Realtors, the HRRA, and the National Association of Realtors, that continues to be a housing shortage in this country, you know, despite the fact that how much has been built, you know, particularly here in Suffolk, there still is a housing, a housing shortage. So with that, I'll let Mr. Napolitano respond to my question.
Let me make one statement first. I hope what you just said about six or seven years of not being finished doesn't happen. Don't jinx it. But no, in, in, in answer to your question, and I was sitting here already thinking about that, we're going to have to go back and relook at the schedule and all based on that and work with planning staff as far as, sort of like we did with this, where we came up with this schedule. Certainly, that schedule is basically no good anymore, so we're going to have to revamp that. But we're going to do it the same way that we did this, trying to look at a conservative approach to it that would, you know, limit the number of houses, but be able to at least keep the community going. And if I may say one thing to Mr. Lewis to consider, the lady earlier said about no left turn lane. There is the orange hash marks, and I'm not a traffic engineer, but that is there for that left turn lane eventually. Maybe we can change that striping now and put that turn, put that left turn lane in, which, if that will help people. I know every time I make the left, I pull into those marks and then make the turn. So something to think about, sir.
Okay, we got a motion in a second to table until June 7th. Any further discussion? If not, council members prepare to vote. Please cast your vote. Madam Clerk, please record the vote.
The motion is approved by a vote of six to one, with Councilmember Richter voting in opposition.
Okay, our next public hearing is an ordinance to grant. Okay. Our next public hearing is an ordinance to grant a conditional use permit to establish a solar energy facility on property located on Indian Trail zoning map 39, parcel 39, account number 150998000. This is CUP 202228. Mr. Manager, please provide an overview.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council, items 13 and 14 are sort of, are related to generally the same solar energy project, but Kevin Wine, Director of Planning and Community Development, will provide the staff report.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Manager, Mayor, Vice Mayor. As, uh, the city manager alluded to, um, items, uh, CUP 202228 and 29 are, for all intents and purposes, companion items. There are two separate properties, uh, they are adjacent properties, uh, one on the north side of Indian Trail Road, one on the southern portion of Indian Trail Road, um, under the same ownership, and, um, the applicant is the same for both of those. So I'm going to, for the sake of brevity and not being too redundant through two presentations, I'll present these kind of as one presentation. Uh, but these are two conditional use permit applications to establish, uh, solar facilities on parcels located, um, on the opposite sides of Indian Trail, uh, just northeast of Rurton Boulevard. Um, the proposed facilities include a five-megawatt facility, that's the larger facility, um, on the southern portion of, um, south of Indian Trail, and a smaller facility, three megawatts, on the northern side. Uh, here you have the two individual parcels. Um, the, uh, the one on the left hand of the screen is that, uh, Southern Project, uh, which would be the larger facility from a megawatt standpoint. And then on your right, you have the Northern Project. Uh, the Northern Project consists of about 110 acres, of which about 24 would be utilized for the solar facility project. Um, the, uh, Southern Project, about 130 acres total, of which about 30 of those acres would be utilized for a solar facility project. Uh, here we have a, a rendering of that, um, of the proposed Southern, uh, project here. Uh, like I said, it comprises the, the actual, um, size of the, the land disturbance and facilities associated with the solar energy project, consists of about 30 acres, just shy, or just shy of 30 acres, on a, about 135 acre parcel. Um, there are some wetlands on this property. Um, those are largely going to be, um, avoided altogether. Uh, the northwestern corner, uh, of the property you'll see, uh, is about 432 feet from, uh, the rear lot line of the nearest residential, uh, property, which is actually vacant of residence now. Um, it's approximately 706 feet from the furthest, um, point on that. But you can see there's a very significant buffer, uh, between the residential that it's located immediately adjacent to, uh, nearly 500 feet from those properties. Uh, currently, there, um, is a farm road on the property, um, and the facility, uh, will be located on an improved gravel access road. Uh, here we have the same, uh, rendering, uh, for the Northern parcel. You can see it's, uh, more compact, uh, will generate less energy. Um, this is, uh, like I said, 110 acre parcel, uh, about 24 acres of it would be disturbed as it relates to the solar project. Um, once again, there are some wetlands, uh, non-titled wetlands, uh, on the site, uh, that, that are labeled here that are going to be avoided, uh, when installing any, uh, solar, uh, panels. So, uh, an important consideration for these items, um, is the, the haul route during construction. Uh, these facilities themselves don't necessarily generate a lot of vehicular trips, um, almost none. Um, they're unmanned facilities, uh, usually the technician will come out a, a couple of times a week, uh, just to make sure everything's running correctly. Um, so, uh, we've asked for, uh, these projects in the past to provide us with a haul route for construction traffic, and that's what we have here. Uh, we, in particular, had a concern about construction traffic, uh, coming from, uh, North Indian Trail, southbound to the site. Um, so, uh, we have made this a condition of our, um, recommendation, should you move to approve this. Uh, here we have a rendering. This is, uh, the view of the South Project, uh, and, um, obviously it's a, a generated kind of superimposed, um, image there, but it does give you a good idea of, uh, with a vegetated buffer, which, uh, is required as part of, uh, one of the staff recommended conditions, um, and the setback from Indian Trail visibility, which is generally a key concern with these uses, um, will largely be mitigated. Uh, here we have a similar visual simulation from, uh, the North Project. Uh, once again, setback relatively far from , uh, the property line, uh, and there would be, uh, substantial evergreen vegetation, um, to comply with our minimum, uh, ordinance standards and condition as, as a part of any such approval. Uh, staff is recommending, uh, nine total conditions as it relates to this project. Um, those include, uh, the haul route, as noted, um, some agricultural fencing at the discretion of the Director of, uh, Planning, um, a noise sim- simulation study, uh, to be conducted prior to site plan approval, uh, which would, uh, show potential, um, noise to be generated from the site. Um, a commercial entrance is a standard, uh, for, for both of these sites, um, and that, uh, the solar energy facility shall ensure, uh, reasonable access to all parts for fire and emergency access, uh, among others. Um, as with any, uh, solar energy facility, uh, we do have supplemental use standards in the Unified Development Ordinance that heavily regulate these as well. Um, this is within our rural agricultural area, um, not within a growth area, and they are permitted with a conditional use permit, uh, on agriculturally zoned property. Uh, so staff, uh, has looked at the considerations within our Unified Development Ordinance and, uh, are recommended approval with those conditions provided to you all. Uh, the Planning Commission, at their meeting of January 17th, uh, voted seven to zero, uh, seven to zero, uh, to approve resolutions recommending, uh, both of these CUPs, both CUP 2022028, uh, with the staff recommended conditions, and CUP 2022029. Uh, with that being said, that concludes my presentation. I'll be happy to, uh, answer any questions at the conclusion of the public hearing.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Wine. Before we open the public hearing, Madam Clerk, please explain the timing system.
This is a public hearing, and each speaker is asked to provide their name and their address. We will have a 10-minute period for the proponents, a 15-minute period for those in opposition, and then an additional five minutes for rebuttal.
This is a public hearing. Will the first speaker please come forward and provide their name and address? Let's just speak in favor.
Hi. Good evening. My name's Carson Wine, and I'm Senior Business Developer with CV North America. Um, great to see Mayor Dooman and the council tonight. I'm here to speak on behalf of our applications for conditional use permits for two solar energy facilities on Indian Trail. Thank you to Kevin for the introduction. Um, I have a handful of points I'd like to make, and then we have a couple other speakers as well in favor of the projects. So I want to reiterate, start by, um, reiterating that CV North America is a unique solar developer. So our business model is such that we do not sell our projects. Um, we're unique in that way. We own and operate for the long term, and, and we take a, a genuine interest in the local community because of that. We genuinely care about the impacts of our projects, and we try to be a model example of what a solar developer can be in the community, and we hope to do that here with these projects, and maybe even influence how you review, um, and decide on future solar projects in Suffolk. We try to do it right. Um, we go above and beyond to ensure that our projects are mitigated as best they can be. Um, we try to locate properties that are in low-impact areas that won't cause disturbances. Uh, we try to exceed the property line setback requirements wherever we can. We obviously adhere to landscaping and screening requirements. On these projects, we have 50-foot buffers, dense, extensive screening buffers on the areas that are exposed. Um, we go above and beyond with things like proposing a three-year landscaping bond to make sure that that landscaping takes hold, takes root, and does perform to the visual simulations you just saw. Um, other things like a road bond. We want to respect Indian Trail. We're willing, happy to put a road bond in place to make sure that the road is repaired if needed after construction. Uh, we commit to property tax levels that are above the requirements of the state. So we're committing to $2,000 per megawatt per year for these projects. For each of these two projects, the requirement from the state is 1,400. And we will, we're committing to deliver the energy savings. These are community solar facilities. Um, we deliver monthly savings to Dominion customers, uh, and we're making a commitment to ensure that those savings go to Suffolk residents, residents, those local to the projects. So we try to be a good solar developer, and wanted to make that point, I, I think we'd be a great partner with the city going forward. These specific sites, uh, are sighted extremely well for solar use in the city of Suffolk. So we sought these sites specifically because of where they were located in the city and their existing conditions. So these sites are on the outskirts of town, near the city limits. Um, they're not visible from any major roadways. They're perfectly flat in elevation. There's no vantage points surrounding these properties that look into it or up to it. Um, they're previously cleared. We don't have to clear, cut down trees. And they're surrounded by existing vegetation. So our projects will be sighted on these cleared areas, surrounded by tall, existing, dense vegetation on three of the four sides. There's only a, a couple of strips where these solar facilities will be exposed to Indian Trail, and those areas we are screening. Um, like Kevin said, they're setback far from the nearby residential of Butters, uh, and they're setback even further from Indian Trail. So we're about four, 450 feet setback from Indian Trail on the Northern Project, and about 700 feet setback from Indian Trail on the Southern Project. So we think that these projects will be an invisible, quiet neighbor for the Indian Trail community because of how well the existing conditions, how well sighted the existing conditions of these sites are. There's local benefits, so, uh, 18 million kilowatt hours of clean energy will be produced by these two facilities in a single year. So that's a meaningful amount of clean energy. Um, it's equivalent to planting 15,000 acres of U.S. forest, or the equivalent of removing 2,800 gas-powered vehicles from the, from the road for a single year. And we'll be doing this each year for 25 to 35 years. So it's, it's a power, powerful source of domestic electricity generation in a time when we need it most. Uh, we need more electricity generation here in the United States to help reduce energy prices and to cut our reliance on foreign sources of fuel, such as oil and natural gas. And this is why the state passed this legislation a couple years ago, to promote the development of these types of projects. Um, coming from this clean energy, 18 million kilowatt hours of clean energy per year, because it is a community solar project, about 1,300, 1,400 Dominion customers can subscribe to these projects. They'll receive monthly credits on their Dominion bills, discounts. Um, each month for the next 25 years, those 1,300, 1,400 residents will save over $4 million in energy costs. I'm, I'm keeping an eye on the time. I'll keep it moving. The city will benefit as well, so tax revenues will jump because of the higher value use of the property. Uh, we're committing to $2,000 per megawatt, uh, on the property taxes for the facility, and we will pay the full assessed property taxes on the underlying land. Those property taxes will jump. Uh, we estimate that the city will receive $860,000 in tax revenue over 25 years. And it's worth noting that this tax revenue is accretive to the city budget. So there's no traffic, there's no additional kids in the school district, uh, there's no additional strain on water and sewer, or police, or fire. This is a very low-impact use of the property that will drive benefit to the city budget. Uh, and finally, I, I want to point out that this is a conditional use permit per the UDO. It's not a question of whether solar is permitted in the actres, district, it is, but rather whether these particular projects have mitigated their impacts. Meaning, they are permitted, but granted, the correct conditions for their development are in place. Um, staff issued a positive staff report, and the Planning Commission voted for a unanimous positive recommendation. We take that as a sign they believe our projects have sufficiently mitigated those impacts, and we hope City Council will as well. Thank you. That's my time.
Okay. We have our next speaker to speak in favor of this ordinance. We have approximately two minutes and 46 seconds, give or take.
Hopefully, I'll have 30 seconds to spare. Uh, good evening, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, distinguished members of council, and Mr. Moore. My long, boy, we've been doing this a long time. Uh, it's been my pleasure to peer before the Suffolk City Council since literally the 80s as a resident, consultant, and a developer. Today, I'm here as a proponent for the Johnson Solar Farm application.
Excuse me, sir. Can you please state your name and address for the record?
I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Exactly right. I'm Dean Vincent. My business address is 5131 River Club Drive in Suffolk. Um, going back, I feel I offer a unique perspective here. Um, I'm a sixth-generation farmer in South Hampton County, which is, which is home to the 100-megawatt South Hampton Solar since 2016. After working our farms for 50 years, my father and I decided that farming and solar can coexist, and half of our cultivated land is still being farmed today. Um, so I've been working two jobs for a long time. I want to point out very many positives to solar. First of all, rollback taxes. The city receives these prior to construction, and they are significant. Annual taxes, taking the farmland out of land use, increasing the per-acre assessment of land, along with the value of the solar equipment, has resulted on our property of an increase by more than 600% in the tax revenues to the locality. Um, you can't say there's no traffic, but there's almost no traffic. Unlike cutting out a one-acre parcel for home sites, after the short four-to-six-month construction timeframe, the only traffic is seasonal mowing and someone coming by periodically to check on the equipment. There are no demand on city services. This is a renewable source of clean energy. Unlike drilling, fracking, and coal mining, other than wires and posts in the ground, there is no effect on the land, and it generates power from sunup to sundown. Solar coexisting with the balance of our farms have allowed our family to remain in the family, our farmland to remain in the family, while providing funding to give back to the community, just as the Johnsons are proposing. In conclusion, I'd like to applaud the city of Suffolk with its attentions to setbacks of solar from the roadways adjoining properties. Um, I'm an engineer, so I look at, and if, I look at landscaping and the details in your landscape board, and it's a great, and most importantly, the bonding mechanism to make sure the property is reverted back to farmland at the end of solar lease. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Okay. Well, now we've got 15 minutes for opposition. Do we have anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this ordinance?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members. My name is Mike Griffin, and I reside at 5800 O'Kelly Drive here in Suffolk. My comments here tonight are not personal. This proposed project has no direct impact on me whatsoever. My concerns are for the overall welfare of our citizens and the long-term future of our people. We are here to consider yet another solar power facility, if approved, that will consume more cropland from the city of Suffolk's rural agricultural base. There are two underlying issues here. The first issue is the fundamental viability of shared community solar. The second issue is should we be consuming valuable cropland for the installation of these facilities? To address either of these two issues responsibly, I think we owe it to future generations to consider all facets of losses, as well as any potential gains. I hope to demonstrate for you that the losses far outweigh any gain. This particular project is an eight-megawatt total facility proposed to be a part of the shared solar program. I'd like to point out that this program proposes a total of 200 megawatts to be considered within Dominion Power territory. None of these sites are supposed to be larger than five megawatts that is so stipulated in that program. That translates into a potential of 40 of these each individual sites within Dominion bound. boundaries. 200 megawatts divided by five is 40. This project is somewhat unique because it is not directly located near an existing three-phase system. The proposal presented here tonight clearly states that it will require 3.8 miles of service line upgrade just to be able to connect this facility to the grid in Holland. By my estimate, this one-line item will cost somewhere between $1.2 and $1.4 million. I would further estimate that the actual cost of site work and equipment installation would be somewhere near in the $4 million mark, plus the annual lease payments to the landowner, which I will not estimate here tonight out of respect for their privacy. All of this for an energy source that is, at best, by their own admission, 20% efficient. And the estimates that Carson's just presented are based on the sun shining. This 20% efficiency only works when the sun is shining. We all know the sun doesn't shine all the time. I'm highlighting these items because from a cost perspective and business model, this simply does not work. The amount of electricity that this facility will produce versus the cost it's going to incur does not work. These facilities do not stand on their own merit, and my concerns are that this is a huge game of smoke and mirrors where the ultimate financial burden is placed upon the shoulders of our citizens and taxpayers. In other words, I'm suggesting to you that our citizens are actually paying for the savings that they're being told they're receiving. If I haven't convinced you yet, and we truly believe that we must embrace solar here in Suffolk to thrive into the future, then I think we should be considering developing this energy source with vision and wisdom in such a way that it does not negatively impact our food supply or the rural character of our city. There are other options that we have not implemented. For example, here in Suffolk, we currently have more than 24 million square feet of rooftop warehouse. We have another 5 million in the works. We have 19 schools, 10 fire stations, numerous police in municipal buildings, and to the best of my knowledge, there's not a single solar panel on the roof of any structure that I just mentioned, not one. The land that these buildings occupy has already been consumed. If we must embrace solar, then put it on the roof. We could almost duplicate one of these five watt, five-megawatt proposed sites here tonight with a rooftop installation on a warehouse to size as a target distribution center located on Manning Bridge Road. That one building would almost reach compliance for a five-megawatt facility. The whole concept behind this shared energy solar program is to provide solar availability to citizens that do not have the rooftop capability for their own installations. Our warehouse community could provide a huge boost to our citizens by offering and utilizing their significant rooftop footprint to contribute to this shared community effort. I would like to now shift our focus to the agricultural aspects of this proposal. When we approve a solar facility of any kind that consumes a field or farm, we are simultaneously losing a part of our ability to produce food and fiber to feed our people. This land is a precious resource that we have been entrusted with, and it cannot be replaced once it's gone. We should never lose sight of the essentials of life in our quest to improve life. Our land is truly a renewable resource and one of the greatest assets of our city and this great nation. Here in the United States, we have approximately 10% of the cultivatable land contained on the planet, second only to India. This is a detail that I think has global impact, and I think it's very important that we recognize facts like this, and we do everything that we can to protect our cropland. We are losing our cropland at a very rapid pace. The USDA has reported that we have lost 1.3 million acres in 2021 and that we have lost 13 million since 2014. We also have foreign entities that now, as of 2021, own some 41 million acres of cropland here in the United States. USDA has also reported that the state of Virginia alone is losing cropland at a rate of 2,000 acres per week. More locally here for us in Suffolk. At the time of adoption of our last comprehensive plan review, which was April of 2015, it is reported in our very own plan that at that time, we had lost 7,000 acres of cropland, and we have lost several, several thousand more acres since the date of that adoption. My friends, these are alarming numbers, and we should all be very concerned. One of the greatest strengths of any, of any nation, certainly this great nation, is to be able to be self-sustaining and be able to feed ourselves. In 1927, the population of planet Earth was 2 billion. In 1974, the population was 4 billion. As we sit here tonight, that number is just over 8 billion souls on this planet. These 8 billion and counting people must have food. Where's it going to come from as we continue to expand? The average age of the American farmer is 58 years old, and there are less than 2 million of us left in this country. That's less than 1% of our total population that is providing food and fiber for our people as well as hundreds of millions of others across this globe. The mechanism of United States agriculture is one of the most efficient machines in the world, providing the most output with the least input. The time has come for us to view our future through a different lens. We must endeavor to increase our awareness and apply great wisdom to decisions that will affect entire populations. Suffolk contains a little over 4,000 acres of freshwater lakes that are owned by Norfolk and Portsmouth. How many times in the last 50 years have we all wished that we had those resources back? I promise you all this, in the next 50 years, you're going to wish we had this cropland back. If I were a professional doctor and I gave you medical advice, you'd probably listen. If I were a professional lawyer and gave you legal advice, you would probably listen. Well, I'm a professional farmer. We grow your food, and I'm suggesting to you that we begin tonight and start protecting our ability to feed our people. Thank you all for your time, and thank you for your, for your service to our community.
Our next, our next speaker, please, to speak in opposition. The next speaker to speak in opposition.
Mayor Dooman, Vice Mayor, City Manager and Council. I'm up here again. One of the things, like Mike just said, if we, if we go along with this, we're going to lose more farmland.
Excuse me, circuit. Do you mind providing your name and address, please?
I'm sorry. Wayne Boys, 5121 Indian Trail, Suffolk, Virginia. Going back, we're going to lose more farmland. That's what we talk about all the time, you know, with rezoning that's going on. I mean, that's all I hear. Rezone, farmland, gone. Rezone, farmland, gone. If we continue this, like Mike said, the world needs food. If we don't, if we don't grow food, we're going to starve. Them solar panels won't do us any good because we don't, we won't need electricity because we won't be here. So one question, I think it's a question, but one of the statements he made that they were in here, in it for the long haul. But then I kept hearing him say something about 25 years. The long haul for solar panels is about 25 years, just like all the rest of the solar panels that go up. Nobody even talks about what happens when they, when they're no longer needed or, or they've, they've used up their, their use. Well, what I want to know is who's going to clean up their solar panels places when they get through with them? Because nobody, nobody mentions that. All they want to do is get them in, they're going to wear out, and then they're going to go looking for another piece of property to build new ones. But they're going to leave all that junk behind. And so I want to know, you know, in long haul, they're going to clean it up when everything's done? So like I said, you know, before, I've said this before, you look at that seal behind you, the peanuts in the middle, you need to save the peanuts.
Our next speaker to speak in opposition. Do we have anyone else who would like to speak in opposition?
Christopher Dove, A52 Colonel Maid Road, Suffolk, Virginia. I find myself conflicted. I support solar panels. I think clean energy is a valuable resource that we need to look to. However, I also have the same concern the former gentleman had. What happens to this property after the solar panels are no longer effective? I'd like to see a proffer submitted by the applicant that they would guarantee that they would clean up residue and return the land back to farm or continue and refertilize the solar panels so they could be continued. I don't want to be stuck with a solar farm that's no longer usable, and we can use it for farmland as well. Thank you.
Next speaker to speak in opposition.
Michael Amory, 9068 River Crescent, Suffolk, Virginia. I'm not sure if this is opposition, maybe an idea, but so the cost, who was just saying, if we, if you were going to accept that, that cost that the gentleman was discussing would be the, for the infrastructure, maybe you could re-account that for grants on the warehouses. Because, I mean, for someone to incur a cost, probably unlikely, but if you reallocated money you were going to use, then you could offer grants and then, you know, that's it. I don't know if that's opposition, but.
Our next speaker to speak in opposition.
Good evening. My name is Carlton Diggs. I reside at 7321 Indian Trail. If this solar farm does go through, it will impact my home. My home will be surrounded by solar farm. No one's even mentioned what the property value will become of the property. I'm sure most people would not want to live in a solar farm. No one's mentioned, if the, if the solar panels are damaged, what, what happens to the chemicals in that solar panel? I have a well. Is, is my well going to be contaminated? So for that reason, for me personally, I don't, I didn't, I like the rural country. That's what I moved out there. If I retire, that's where I want to be, but I do not want to live in an available solar farm. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker to speak in opposition. Is there anyone else who would like to speak in opposition? Hearing none, we have a five-minute rebuttal period for the proponents, if you would like to come up and speak in rebuttal.
Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, and members of the city of Suffolk Council, good evening. I'm Ed Johnson. My wife Carol cannot be here tonight recovering from foot surgery, and we reside at 7557 Indian Trail, Suffolk, 23437. My wife and I are the owners of the North and South Parcels, which we decided to become, which we deeded to become Indian Trail Solar LLC. Except for the four years in college and a year and a half living in Augusta, Georgia, I have been a lifelong resident of Nanceman County and the city of Suffolk. Growing up on a family farm, you learn the virtues of life. You learn that unfortunately, you must sacrifice family time for the sake of the crops, and you literally give your blood, sweat, tears, and in my case, broken bones. I returned back to the family farm in 1984, where I farmed with my dad till my retirement in 2001. While farming, I had the opportunity to purchase the North and South Parcels, land which I was already tending. From the very beginning, I realized that this property was going to become an investment farm. I turned to the idea of solar over three years ago and turned to C V E of North America to make my dream become a reality. The size and scope of our projects, plus the company's history of never selling projects, were huge deciding factors. Before I signed the contract, it was understood that this project would consistently go over and beyond any requirements set forth for the city of Suffolk, a fact which is reflected several times in the planning department's reports. These solar projects are the most non-invasive form of creating supplemental farm income there is. When the contract runs its course, the sites will be decommissioned at the cause of C V E and turned back to farmland at C V E's expense. One year of this solar contract will be equal to 10-plus years of farm income. Solar energy is by far the cleanest renewable our country has to offer. By the year 2045, Dominion has to be operating at 100% power using only renewable energy. To compound the power grid problem, on March of 2021, Governor Ralph Norfram signed the legislation called the Clean Cars Bill. This act would mandate that Virginia would copy the state of California for the vehicle climate control. On January the 18th, 2023, Governor Yonkin introduced legislation to repeal the Clean Cars Bill. Unfortunately, this was defeated by an eight-to-seven vote. The result? Well, it's this. Beginning in 2035, all new vehicle sales will be electric, and gasoline cars and trucks will be banned in all great states. Make no mistake, solar is coming to Suffolk, as is evidenced by the planning commission's hearing slated for February 21st, when they will be hearing about the project on Willroy Road. The scope and the size of this Indian Trail site is only going to take up 62 acres, and you're going to have 10 acres, give or take, on each parcel going to be in cropland. The Virginia Agricultural Census of 2017 found Virginia had 7.8 million, that's with a M, million acres of cropland in the state versus 62 acres. The rest of this, I'm going to just hold off, and I'm going to address some of the things that's been said. The citizens of Suffolk are not going to pay one penny for the infrastructure needed for this solar site. The actual cost of running power lines up and down Indian Trail for this site is going to be over half a million dollars, $800,000. That's on C V E's dime, not the taxpayer. They are having to improve the Holland substation at a cost of 2 to 3 million. Taxpayers, zero. C V E, 2 to 3 million. The farmers who are opposed to this, they're sending a clear message to their landlords. If you become sick, financial hardship, you want to get a solar site to help your financial situation? Ah, too bad. You're evil. You're bad. You can't have that. I need your farmland to farm, but no, you can't benefit yourself. My time's expired. Can I have any more? I'm glad I take it. All right. I thank each of you for your time. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, that concludes our time, and there will be no additional speakers, so this public hearing is now closed. An ordinance has been presented for council's consideration. Questions, comments, or a motion would be in order. Yeah, we're just voting on one this time, then we're going to vote on the 14. There you go. Okay. Council? Questions, comments, motion? No questions, no comments, no motions? Somebody could do something. I get a city attorney. Can you help me here? There we go. Counselperson Butler Barlow.
Thank you, Mayor. This is difficult, but I want to make a couple of comments. I do want to say, Mr. Weinard, this is one of the best projects, I think, that has come before us, and I compliment you on that, and you're not going to like anything I say after this. I feel like that the city of Suffolk does not have a complete enough way to receive solar projects into our city. I know that we have zoning requirements, and I know that we have conditional use permit requirements, but I think that we don't know the long-term impact of these facilities. And I don't, I just don't feel like we're quite ready to receive them into the city. I'd like to make a couple of statements, and, you know, disclaimer, I am a farmer, so you're going to get the farm side of things. My first argument is that agricultural land is already a solar collection facility. We're collecting solar energy. We're producing food. We're producing food and fiber. I think that's a really important fact. You're not getting any more green by going to solar from a farm. Farm is about the greenest energy you can, you can supply. I think that we don't know enough about the environmental impacts of these facilities. We have not ever undone one. We have only done them. We have not had the 20 to 25 years. You know, I've been told by Dominion, by several companies, that, oh, we're going to take it all up and we're going to put it back to farmland. No one has, has done that, and I question whether or not that can be done. I think the end of the life of these projects, the impacts, again, we don't know what the environmental impacts are going to be on that piece of land 25 years down the road. I asked somebody at Dominion, what's the significance of the 20 to 20-year, 25-year contract? And I was told that that is when the technology will likely be obsolete, and then we'll be on to something else. So, these are not lifelong projects. They're short-term until the technology changes again. I appreciate the company's interest in trying to do it right, but I just don't think we quite know what right is at this point in time. I think there are too many unknowns. What I would love to see in the city, and what Mr. Griffin stated in his comments, was we have a lot of existing impervious surfaces that would be great for solar panels, and it would, it would be a net win because we're not going to take away valuable farmland, and we can start with public buildings that belong to the city and, and our schools, and they can be incorporated into the science curriculum. I think that's a win for everybody. I even know of a project in Northern Virginia where there will be solar voltaic panels built into the skin of the building, and I think that's the future that we're looking at, rather than taking up our valuable farmland. I think we need to explore incentives for solar on buildings, just as we have, we obviously know that there are incentives for solar companies to put solar on farmland. I think we could shift those same incentives and try to find ways to put those on other existing impervious surfaces. Those are just my comments. Again, I, this project in and of itself meets a lot of the requirements of the city, but on principle, I'm going to have to say that I'm just opposed to any more solar until we answer a lot of these unknown questions. Thank you.
Councilman Johnson.
And I'm going to get mine out of the way as well. I'm a little bit at a disadvantage. Ed and I grew up together. A more honorable person that's not in the city. The Johnsons are well-respected, well-thought-of, and just good people. If anybody could do this right, it's Ed. I mean, the CVE of North America will very likely think, holy cow, once they get into this with him, because it's going to be perfect. It's going to meet every, every specification that we have asked him to do. The farm is 400-foot back off the road. We asked for 50. I mean, a lot of good things. I can't, though, take my eye off of the houses that are next to the solar farm. I agree with the gentleman that said, what is it going to do to my land value? I, I wouldn't live there. And I don't think, my experience with solar so far has been so not good. It makes it really difficult for me to think that it is the way of the future. I think it is a way for a farmer to subsidize and to keep the farm farming. I do think that, and I think that was the kind of intent here, but I question whether, and it's just my opinions, and that's all I can vote on, is my opinion, that 25 years from now, we're going to have anything that we can actually put any credence in, so I worry about the future for his family as far as where it's going to go. Everything that was satisfactory, the young man, if we wanted an advisor on solar, Carson Winnens is a responsible, amazing young man with a lot of resources and a, and a, and a good way about him. I was so impressed, meeting him and talking with him, and I'll put it out there and told Ed I would support him if I could. I just can't, and that's my problem. I don't, very much like Shelley said, Ms. Barlow, I'm sorry, Councilwoman Barlow, I don't think we're ready. And we've started looking at it in a way such that we wouldn't get anything that we couldn't live with, moving it away from the roads and doing all these things, but I'll be being responsible to our citizens by allowing it just yet, when we're not really that competent with it. As far as the city goes, the city's the same way. They know what rules and regulations we put forth. This is a tough nut. So, for that reason, and that reason alone, I'm, I can't support it, but I'm not sure I could support any solar farms that take valuable farmland. And I won't say anymore. I promise I wouldn't say too much, but, but, I mean, that's where I stand, and I wish him the very best, of course. Thank you.
Councilman Bennett.
Mine's going to be very short. I would just like to say, I've learned more since we started solar farms. First one I remember is on 460, and the next ones were on White Marsh Road. I've had some, a couple of complaints from residents on White Marsh Road that lived near the solar farm. I, when I first voted to start approving, I didn't realize, I was told that it wasn't any noise coming from them, and I've been told different. I don't live near one, but some of the people, a couple of people that live by the one on Hosey Road have told me that, so if somebody can tell me they're wrong, I can appreciate it, but I have to go by what I've been told by people that live in the vicinity of the solar farm out on White Marsh Road. Thank you.
Counsel, any other questions, comments? Here we go. Councilman Richter.
I'm just going to, and I've kind of said this before, because I've been on the Planning Commission and have seen some of these solar farms come before that commission, before it came to this body. As a general rule, I think swapping tillable land for a solar farm is a poor trade. I, I agree that there are probably a lot of places that we could put solar energy that would be a little bit more practical, a little bit less invasive to the land. But, you know, you balance that against the farmer, and, and what, his land is his, essentially, his retirement, and if he doesn't have family members that are coming along behind him that, that want to continue to farm the land, you know, then kind of where does, where does that leave him? So, I'm, you know, genuinely torn between it, because I think there, you know, good arguments on both sides. I, I do have some environmental concerns, and maybe somebody from the solar farm could answer this. I, I read a paper that was put out a little while ago, I believe by NC State, and it talked about the post that these solar panels are used to attach to the ground and, and the galvanization of the post and the zinc that is in them. I know that zinc, once it gets leached into the land, is, you know, an almost an incurable situation, and it takes, from what I've been told, 25, 30 years for it to get back out to where you can actually grow something along it. And I, you know, you can go along and see old farms and whatnot where they had a galvanized fence running along the property line, and it's basically creates a dead zone around that. So, I just wondered if maybe they could come back and, and speak to that for me.
Yep. So, the posts are galvanized steel, and they don't leach until they reach a certain temperature, which is above 200 degrees Fahrenheit. So, there, there, there's no, there's no toxic chemicals leaching into the groundwater from this facility. There's no toxic chemicals in the inverters or the transformers or the panels themselves. The panels are aluminum and glass and plastics. Yep. And a little bit of silver.
Oh, did you cut yourself off? Okay. Never cut yourself off.
I, I'm not a chemist, and I'm not a metallurgist, so I'm not going to, not going to argue that point with you. It, it's just, just what I read, and I'm assuming that the people at NC State knew a little bit of what they were talking about, perhaps they were wrong.
Sure. Thank you.
Councilman Fawcett.
I have one question for you while you're there. Excuse me? I was trying to catch you before you got away. I'm curious, the gentleman said there are going to be cables running down Indian Trail. Are they going to be above ground or below ground type cables?
Above ground along Indian Trail, and then they dive beneath ground onto the property.
Okay, so they're going to be above ground all the way to the trans, substation?
Using the existing poles.
I got you. Okay. Thanks.
Counsel, any other questions or comments? If not, I'll chunk my comments in there, and we'll hit it one more time and see if we can come up with a decision here. I agree with Councilman Johnson, and I agree with Counselperson Butler Barlow. This is probably the best application I've seen. We've, I agree, we probably need a little more guidance, because right now it's just a conditional use permit, so every one of these is dependent on the analysis and the opinion of counsel. There's not really enough to hang your hat on sometimes, if, in certain circumstances. This one, I mean, I've looked at it, and I've looked at the pros and the cons, and we talked about decommissioning. I mean, they, they posted decommissioning bond, so that's not going to be an issue. I mean, if they go south in five years, then the city would go against the bond, and the bond would pay for decommissioning, so that's, that's not an issue. Noise levels, I mean, unless all this is smoke and mirrors, I mean, they did a noise level test, 29 to 45 decibels receiving properties, which is well within the noise limitations of the UDO. As Councilman Johnson alluded to, I mean, they're 400-plus feet off the road, pretty much, with not a whole lot of anything around it. They are keeping part of the land in agricultural farming use, so this, in essence, becomes a supplement income for a farmer. They're still farming, and I think most of us can use it as supplemental income, especially with the price of eggs right now and everything else in the world. So, I don't think the goal is to replace agricultural land with solar farms. I think it's incumbent upon us to ensure that we are indeed approving those in a place that will not be objectionable, where they're not threatening, that tax revenues, the tax revenue, and just like one of the speakers alluded to, and I'm not crazy about it, but I, you know, I, I'm not looking forward to someday every car being electric. I still can't get that through my little pea head that I probably won't be around then, that I've got to sell nothing but electric cars. But that is what is being, you know, promoted. So, solar, solar farms, so, solar, they, they have a purpose. I look at some of the tax advantages here, not just for us as far as revenue, but for citizens that are capable of hooking up to it. These folks have done their homework. They have the project more, very much more, exceeds what would normally be required within our standards, 400 feet and 1,000 feet setbacks, the visual buffers, the size of the project, where the project's located, the bond being issued for the decommissioning, them also agreeing to an additional bond, I believe, in regards to the roads, the limited construction there, their landscaping bond, you know. Unfortunately, the first one we approved on 460 was not probably the best example, you know, but we learn by our mistakes, you know. If we, you know, making, and the big problem with 460 was the vegetation, because it stayed wet all the time. I don't know. I had to speak to the horticulturist over here. I don't know what you can put in there that'll, that'll, that'll grow. But I think these folks have done their homework. I think it's in the right place, and to be honest with you, if we don't approve this one, we just need to take it off the books and never look at another one, because we're just wasting everybody's time. We're absolutely wasting everybody's time. We're wasting staff time. We're wasting applicants' time. We're wasting time up here tonight, because if you can't do this one, you just don't do them. But we haven't gotten to that point yet. But if that's where we want to go, I mean, I guess that's something we talk about, just take them off the books. But there is no logical reason not to approve this, other than you don't like solar farms, because in my opinion, it hits all the criteria. So, I mean, I'm, I'm in favor of it. I don't know where anybody else is. I don't do motions, but at this point, we need a motion to approve or a motion to deny or a motion to table, but we need a motion. Do we have any motions? Don't be afraid. Okay. Councilman Richter.
I guess I'll put my head in the noose and go ahead and make a motion for approval of CUP 2022-028.
Okay, we've got a motion for approval from Councilman Richter. Councilman Fawcett.
I'd like to offer a substitute motion.
Well, we don't have a substitute motion yet, because we don't have a motion on the floor.
He, he has a motion.
But it hasn't been seconded yet.
Okay, I'll hold off.
So, we have a motion for approval. Do we have a second? Hold it. Vice Mayor Ward. We got a second from Vice Mayor Ward. Now you can make a substitute motion. Oops, okay. That's why I'm going to piss me off. Okay.
I guess I'm just in the mood tonight to defer and table some of this stuff. I'm in the good mood to do it, because I don't want to see the project go down, and I don't know if there's enough votes here to pass it tonight. I, I just assume we table this six months, come back and take another look, see if the city comes up or does anything different. I don't know what you can do different, but rather than it go down the tubes, I'm offering a substitute, whether it makes it or not.
Okay. Councilman Fawcett's got a substitute motion to table. Do we have a second?
We, we need, is it to lay on the table or is it to postpone?
Yeah, that.
So, if it is to lay on the table, that, in fact, that is the same as denial.
Right. To table it. Do we, we need to come up with a timeline.
So, if you want to postpone it, you need a date for the postponement.
Yeah, you want to table it until?
The second meeting in August is August the 16th, if that's the timeline you're looking at, sir.
Okay, so we, Councilman Fawcett would like, is making a motion to table to August 15th. Do we have a second?
16th.
16th, excuse me. This year. Hearing no second, we're back to the first motion for approval from Councilman Richter that was seconded by Councilman, Vice Mayor Ward. Do we have any discussion of that motion? Hearing none, council members prepare to vote. We have a motion for approval by Councilman Richter, seconded by Vice Mayor Ward. Prepare to vote. Please cast your vote. Madam Clerk, please record the vote.
We have a, excuse me. We have a, we have two abstentions with Councilmember Fawcett and Councilmember Johnson. You've abstained, sir.
I'm sorry.
Okay, so. Okay. Well, let's do something.
Try again? We need a motion to reconsider.
We need a, a motion to reconsider the?
Recondition, a motion to reconsider the vote.
Mm-hmm. It would have, it would have to be from the, I need to see the results again.
Yeah, I think it comes from the three positive votes.
It come, it has to come from the three yes votes, because there were three yes votes.
Okay, do we have, we have to have a motion to reconsider, and it would have to come from a yay vote. Is that correct? Councilman Richter.
And I'll go ahead and make that motion.
Now, if we have a motion to reconsider, we're just going to vote again.
First, the, the motion needs to be seconded and voted on.
Y'all killing me here. Okay, we got a motion to reconsider by Councilmember Richter and a second from Vice Mayor Ward. Any discussion of that motion? Motion to reconsider, that means we can start all over again with the vote. We have to vote on that first. Right, that's what we're doing. The motion to reconsider more or less negates the vote before this. There you go. Okay. Okay, everybody ready? Okay, this is on the motion to reconsider. Prepare to vote. Members, please cast your vote. Madam Clerk, please record the vote.
The motion is approved by a vote of five to two with Mayor Duman voting in opposition and Councilmember Fawcett abstaining.
Okay, now we're starting over again, am I right, Mr. Attorney? Okay, so we need a motion to approve, a motion to deny, or a motion...
No, the motion to approve is back on the floor.
Or a motion back on.
So you just now vote on whether or not to approve.
Okay, so we're back to the original motion, which is a motion to approve by Councilman Rector, seconded by Vice Mayor Ward. Do we get to have a discussion again? No? Okay, you cannot have any discussion, so get ready to cast your vote. This is for approval. Please cast your vote. Madam Clerk, please record the vote.
So the motion fails. We have three motions voting in opposition. That's Councilmember Bennett, Councilmember Johnson, and Councilmember Butler Barlow. Councilmember Fawcett has abstained, so that's a three to three with one abstention.
The abstention would count as a no because it must be a majority of all members voting.
Great. Thank you for clarifying, Mr. Attorney.
Okay. All right, moving right along. Our next public hearing, do we get to do this again? It's an ordinance to grant a conditional use permit to establish a solar energy facility on property located on Indian Trail zoning map 29 parcel two, account number 150997000, CUP 202229. Mr. Manager, please provide an overview.
I asked Kevin Wine to come to the podium, see if there's any more to add than what we've had in the first presentation.
I don't know what we're doing.
See, they're working on getting this up. But this is, your first public hearing on these companion cases were, was for the south parcel, the larger parcel. So just to remind you, I'm going to go through my slides here, we'll get there. This is for the northern parcel, the three megawatt facility, about 24 acres or so would be, consists of a solar facility. It's about 110-acre parcel. So that, aside from that, I have nothing really to add, other than staff is recommending approval of this with the nine conditions noted in our staff report, and I'll stand by at the conclusion of the public hearing. Thank you.
Okay, before we open the public hearing, Madam Clerk, please explain the timing system.
This is a public hearing and each speaker is asked to provide their name and their address. We will have a 10-minute period for the proponents, a 15-minute period for those in opposition, and then an additional five minutes for rebuttal.
This is a public hearing with first speaker. Please come forward and provide their name and address. Do you have anyone else who would like to speak in favor? Hearing none? Sir? This is, well, we went, we had two applications for the solar energy facilities. We just voted on one. Now we're getting ready to vote on the second. So we're going through the same process we just went through. So now I'm asking for those that are in favor of this one, and this one might be better on the other side of the road, I don't know, maybe, if anyone would like to speak in favor of this ordinance. Well, I believe we have, it's two separate hearings. The city attorney, the way we've done it, we have two separate hearings, so we'll hear them separately. So back to our second public hearing.
Carson Winen, senior business developer with CVE. So this north project, we redesigned the layout with staff to push it back from the road, from Indian Trail. It's 400 feet from Indian Trail and about 700 feet from the nearest abutter there to the east. It's surrounded on all sides by existing vegetation. We will put an easement in place to protect that vegetation with the city. It's about three megawatts, about 5,900 solar panels. We're avoiding all wetlands. There will be no visual impacts, no noise impacts, no traffic impacts, only benefits via property taxes and clean energy and energy savings to the community. We will post the decommissioning bond to remove the facility at the end of its useful life. It's, we receive bill credits for 25 years from Dominion and these panels will, the facility will operate until year 30, potentially year 35. At that point, we will use our funds to remove the site, remove the equipment pads, the posts, the road, the wiring, and restore it to pre-existing conditions. The area that is cleared there will be, continued to be farmed, about 10 acres, as well as on the southern side. So it's a dual use of agricultural farming and solar farming. We try to donate or recycle the panels at the end of the useful life. There will be no impact to property values. No homes will have any sense that this solar facility is even there, and there are studies that have proven, and looking at hundreds of sale transactions of homes nearby facilities like this in states such as Virginia, North Carolina, Illinois, New York, Massachusetts, that there's no meaningful decrease in property values. There's no groundwater contamination. None of the materials on site have any hazardous chemicals in them. There's vegetable oil in the transformers. There's nothing in the inverters, and the solar modules themselves are aluminum and glass. Interconnection costs, we'll use the existing poles on Indian Trail to make our way down to the substation. Yes, we are upgrading that infrastructure, but that is exclusively CVE's cost. There's, the noise-producing equipment are the inverters, and they're centrally located on two equipment pads as far away from abutters as they can be. We've performed noise study analysis that shows that, you know, as Mayor Duman has pointed out, they're well below the city limits in the zoning ordinance. And why not on rooftop? Because there's a lot of issues with rooftop solar projects. One, you have to convince the building owner to work with you for up to 30 years. And during that 30-year period, they can't redevelop the building, and the revenue they receive is small compared to what they get from the actual lease of the facility typically. Also, a lot of these big box warehouses are owned by big Fortune 500 companies that are extremely bureaucratic and have, you know, no immediate incentives to put rooftop solar on all their warehouses throughout the country. A lot of warehouses also have structural issues. They can't bear the weight of rooftop solar. And then there's typical interconnection issues as well that you get with any solar project, of whether or not the grid can accommodate the power. So, you know, we feel that our application here is complete and we've taken measures to go above and beyond what's required and prove that we are a good steward for the community, we're a good partner for the city of Suffolk, and we want to do solar the right way. And for those reasons, we hope that, you know, you approve our application for Johnson North. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Have a next speaker to speak in favor of this ordinance.
Let's try again. I'm just going to speak from the heart and try to make head and tails out of notes that five minutes is not going to do. The whole thing, I cannot grasp my head around, the city of Suffolk gives you requirements to meet. And my motto from the very beginning has been Indian Trail Solar, above and beyond. We have done everything, requirements they hear from planning, we're up here. Planning Commission, you're here, we're up here. And because people are so wrapped up, you think you're going to put a golden dome on farmland for 5,000 years and never touch it. I've got a cold offer on my desk right now at home from a developer out in the western part of the state. He wants to pay me $500,000 to develop that piece of property, and that might not be a bad idea right now. I've already got so much skin in this game, I've put $20,000 in legal fees for this project, which are just going right into right into two. Nothing I say tonight is going to change the same vote. That's a gimme. But I want all these landlords that hopefully are watching tonight, when your little farmer gets up here and says, oh, how bad, how bad this is, it's going to poison the ground. No, it's not. It really is not. And poor Mr. Landlord, don't have a stroke, don't be 95 years old and your spouse is dead and you're dying to your last nickel and dime and this is a good option to supplement income? Oh, well, I've already voted one no for once. I'm going to vote no for you, Mr. Landlord, thumb my nose at you. This is ridiculous. Expectations are here from the city. We're up here, and because the city is not ready for solar, we're being punished? It makes no sense. And for people to abstain votes because you don't want to offend maybe customers you have, or this, or that, it makes no sense. Vote your guts, that's what you're supposed to do. It makes no sense what we're doing right now. But one thing I wanted to say, and I was hoping it's going to be a better reception, at the completion of all this tonight, if even this little small north side gets approved by council, Indian Trail Solar is not going to lie in my pockets. I've got two little grandsons with autism, three years old. The entire concept of this solar farm was to get trust set up for those two little guys that when they reach the age of 18, I know they're going to have some money, so that's sad, in case they can't get health insurance. The main reason for this project is that. Not as I've been hearing on the internet, going to lie in my pockets with money, he's in for the big haul. No, I'm taking care of my family. And this is a hard, hard pill to swallow from this group. But even if this one gets passed, I want y'all to know that the first thing I'm going to do when construction is made, I'm going to speak with Police Chief Chandler and his canine officer, and we're going to find the best bulletproof vest for canines. I already know Suffolk does not have bulletproof vests for that one shepherd you got. And I promise you, I've already done research and I've got one for you, it's going to stop a knife blade up to a 12-gauge blast. I love my dogs, they're going to be protected. When Suffolk's taken care of, I'm going to turn my attention to any other county and city close by where the city government is not funding for those four-legged guys to be protected. One of the other things I'm going to do is my little grandsons take riding lessons at grazing acres, a therapeutic riding school for people with disabilities. I'm going to make sure they're going to be taken care of too. And finally, Mr. Duman, I think you and I can see eye to eye on this one. I love dogs, you love dogs. I'm going to make sure I leave no stone unturned to find every no-kill animal shelter I can. And I'm going to make sure I leave some money for them. I'm not taking it to the grave. I'm going to do what I can to help the community that I love, even after being basically spit on tonight. That's how I feel. Expectations are here, I'm up here, but the city's not ready for solar. Then why are we going through the process? I do not understand. And now I'm $20,000 in the hole and people are back here smiling, saying, hey, we got him, we got him, we put an end to it. But what you don't know, the family folks that like to come out to the country and live, you're getting contamination, not from galvanized poles, but from all those chemicals, pesticides that I know firsthand a farmer will burn your skin. I had to put charcoal filters in my tractors to keep from being burnt from head to toe. My time's up. I thank you very much.
Okay, do we have, I believe we're moving to opposition. Do we have any speakers to speak in opposition?
Good evening again. Do I need to reintroduce myself? My name, my name's Mike Griffin. I live here in Suffolk at 5800 O'Kelly Drive. I did not come here tonight prepared for a debate forum. I didn't think this was going to be a debate forum, and that's not what I came here for. But I'm going to address some of these issues. If we're going to have a debate, I'm going to debate. First of all, unless CVE has come up with some magical zinc process to create a galvanized product that I'm unaware of, zinc does leach into the soil. I've never known anything that was galvanized that didn't leach into the soil. Thank you, Councilman Rector, for your comments. Your article that you read is spot on. The way we galvanize most any component is we hot-dip it into a bath of zinc, and over any period of time, that zinc is going to leach into the soil. And when it does, it results in zinc toxicity, and nothing is going to grow there. That's the end of that story. So I'd like to address just recent comments about housing, and they offer to put this particular parcel of land in housing. You folks are probably going to see more of me as the days and weeks pass and go forward. I'm not a proponent or an adversary to development. I'm an adversary to poorly planned or unwise development. We've heard many times, we heard tonight, we need housing, we've got a shortage of housing. If we need the housing and we don't approve this solar facility and this particular location fits within the comprehensive plan at some point in time, and we need to build some housing for our residents, build it. Put the solar on the roof. Our whole point of contention in here is quit wasting cropland for the sole purpose of solar energy. It's a double waste, in our opinion. If you're going to put a building up, and we believe as a people that we need to embrace solar energy, then put it on the roof. The Ag Advisory Council, ladies and gentlemen, has already issued a letter to this council to address your comments, Mayor, about Suffolk reconsidering our position on solar. I don't know if y'all have received that letter yet, but the letter's been submitted, and that's exactly what we have requested, for this city to reconsider our position on consuming cropland for the purposes of solar energy. My final comment is this, the pesticides that we were just alarmed about. I'd like to point out to everybody here that everything in the United States is regulated by somebody, okay? We all operate under guidelines, rules, regulations. United States agriculture is currently governed and has been governed most of my lifetime by the Environmental Protection Agency. And I believe if you read in your packets very carefully, that very same Environmental Protection Agency established the guidelines for the solar facility. So we're all following the same guidelines. Thank y'all for your time.
Next speaker to speak in opposition.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name's Paul Bowlin. I live at 7260 Indian Trail. I'm not a farmer, I'm a resident, so I'm actually the house that's closest to this project right on the map, 700 feet. And I kind of disagree with Carson there. I just, I don't, you can look at all the studies you want online. If I show my house to somebody and they sit there and look and there's a solar field there, I guarantee it affects my property value. Another thing, I have livestock too. You do noise studies, but inverters, converters, I'm an electrician, I know they all make high-pitched whining frequencies that you can't hear, but my livestock's might hear them. Do we know anything about that? Just something I wanted to bring up. But, other than if this goes through, that's gonna be the sight off my back porch, and I don't know about affecting my animals, and I definitely feel it's gonna affect my property value. Thank you.
Your next speaker to speak in opposition.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council, my name is Wayne Boyce, I live at 5121 Indian Trail, which is on the other end of this. I'm also trying to take care of my grandchildren, my grand, my grandsons, and live on 110-acre farm. And when we rent the farmland, we get just, I get just enough rent off of that farmland just to pay taxes. I'm not making any money off, I'm just trying, I'm paying taxes. I wanna keep that farmland a farm. I wanna keep the open space, I wanna keep the green space, and I wanna do that for my grandchildren and everybody else's children, so they can jump in the car with their grandfather, grandmother, ride down the back road, maybe they might see a pig, might see a cow, might see peanuts. So, you know, it's just different that, you know, kids need this green space. Years ago, and this is what I went through with this, I put it in, some of it in green space. I went, and I didn't put, I didn't spend $20,000, but I did spend some money to put it in green space. After I spent the money I spent, the city changed the rules. So I had to end up taking, going back through all the surveys, the recording, the lawyer's fees, to get it, to add eight acres of farmland to that green space, just so I could keep it that way. So, you know, what I, I just don't know, this city is just, we're building, 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 and now we're talking about solar panels? And, and like y'all said tonight, we don't have the, all the information on these solar panels. Like Ms. Ballow said, you know, she said, nobody's tore one apart yet, nobody's had to. So, we need to just take, sit back and take a look at it, and maybe we can figure out another way that we can do something with this. Thank you.
Next speaker to speak in opposition.
Christopher Dove, 852 Colonelley Drive, Suffolk, Virginia. Once again, I find myself conflicted. I'm only speaking in opposition because we don't know about the zinc, and we don't know about the long-term effects. I think, I'm, I can't believe I'm saying this, but I agree with Councilman Fawcett. I think that you need to go ahead and take a pause, have the planning department research these issues, and come back to council and give you a definitive answer, so that you can either say, yes, it is an issue, or no, it's not an issue. But go ahead and deny it because you're not sure, that's not the way to lead. Thank you.
Next speaker to speak in opposition. Do we have anyone else who would like to speak in opposition? Hearing none, we have a five-minute rebuttal period for the proponents.
It's gonna take me two minutes, I'm slinging on zip. Everybody is so concerned about zinc poisoning their wells. But these same people who move in from out-of-state, Virginia Beach, Hampton, I want my spot out in the country. Well, where are you gonna get your land from? The farmer's gonna sell me an acre of land. I want to be able to watch him spray. That looks so much fun, having a sprayer with booms 40 feet long, and he's spraying five feet above his crop. I'm gonna call my grandchildren, I say, "Come here, look at this thing, that's fantastic." Gee whiz, animals aren't gonna be poisoned by it. It's not gonna go into your bushes and kill them, it happens to me every year, from my farm or ten in my land. Get real. Yes, we follow USDA, EPA guidelines, but guess what? On June 6, 2019, the Center for Biological Diversity published a report which states that the United States is still using 85 pesticides outlawed in other countries. Currently, over 80,000 chemicals are on the market, and the U.S. has banned, how many? 80,000, the United States only banned nine. So get real, if you're gonna talk to me as a former farmer about USDA and how safe we are with pesticides, we are far, far away from being safe. So I guess the city of Suffolk needs to put something on the emblem. And I hate to say it, because I love this country, but it's almost like a hammer and sickle needs to be up there. Why? Because you do what the city says, meet this expectation. I've done it, sir, I'm up here. Nope, that's not good enough, let's go up here. I'm up here, sir, I've done everything this place wants, and we're denied because people want a golden dome over top cropland, and I'm just being here now. Oh, well, we're having a hyza shortage, maybe we can build houses on that land to put satellites and put solar. That's not gonna happen, the same group's gonna be up here complaining. Now I've got too many neighbors, it's too noisy, oh, poor Pito for me. I'm done, Carson, come on, buddy.
We've got two minutes and 10 seconds of rebuttal time, excuse me, 11 seconds worth of rebuttal time.
Yeah. Underneath, I don't have too much to say, but underneath the panels will be what is called pollinator-friendly vegetation, which is about 95% blue gramma gas, grass, which grows about two, three feet high, and we landscape it twice a year. So, it's, it's a harmonious, biodiverse use of the property. There's no impervious pavement. That pollinator-friendly vegetation will be used to promote habitats for birds, bees, insects. We're not spraying any pesticides. It's the lowest-impact use of the property that you could get. We're preventing a residential subdivision that could take two, three years to build out, that would increase traffic, noise. Going back to the vote, it didn't pass, but does that mean there's denial? We're also missing a member this evening, wasn't, how does that play into things? Two questions about the previous vote. Thank you.
Okay, we got 47 seconds worth of rebuttal, if anyone would like to come up. Hearing none, this public hearing is closed. Counsel and ordinance has been presented for consideration, Councilman Fawcett.
I just had a question for you, Cal. Just a quick question. The first CUP got denied, so we're on the second one. How does that play into how this works for you, if it were to get approved this time? How does that work against the first one that was denied? Does that create a big problem, or is it still somewhat salvageable, or where are you at?
Yeah, one is better than none. It would have, it would change our strategy with Dominion for our interconnection process, and I have to go back and double-check exactly how it changes things. You know, I think a lot of the upgrade costs, the burden for the upgrade cost would fall onto a single smaller project, instead of being split between the two. Maybe there's reduced upgrades that are required, because now there's only three watt, megawatts interconnecting instead of eight. But regardless, a lot of infrastructure does need to be upgraded, and that cost will now only fall on, on one project. We'd like to proceed with one project, if possible. It would still be viable on its own, it would just be a different interconnection strategy with Dominion.
Okay, thank you.
Counsel, questions, comments, or a motion to approve denied table? Any other comments? Vice Mayor Warren?
It's not the first time we have mentioned that, in other words, okay, we have seen in the last three or four years, we got more solo farms that want to start in Suffolk. And it's not the first time that it was a concern on this council, that the words were mentioned, that we don't know enough, or we don't know that much about solo. And when anything goes on, there's always what you wanna do, presentation. So a lot of time, the best presentation wins. But if you don't know, you don't know no more than that presentation that you feel sound better. So I'm just asking if the, if Al, if you can get this council some information about solo farms, that we can find out the pros and cons, the illness, does it cost council, does it ruin the land? Can the farm, farmer come back and farm, or does sink there? We got to know these things to make an honest decision, because a lot of, a lot of people know the farmers, and a lot of people don't know the farmers, and so you got a relationship. Suffolk is a farming city. I mean, you know, just like we went through a couple of things, you know, people work 40 and 50 years of their life, and you can tell them they can't sell their property? You can't tell what they can't do? I mean, all your offspring ain't gonna follow you or your generation, you know, they just not doing it. What I'm saying, I just wanted to like to get some more information, of what is, what illness, what is the truth about solo farms? And, you know, we keep saying, well, we don't know enough, or we not ready. What? It's not 1950, it's not 1960 or 70, it's coming. It's here. Technology is here. Compute, I mean, why are we gonna, I don't know enough, that's, that's, that's not a good answer. That's not just, and we gotta make decisions on people spending money. And then, like you said, after they spending do, they ask to do, just like do, the case we had before. If we, and, and if we're not gonna allow solo in the city of Suffolk, let's let them know, no solo. What's wrong? I know y'all don't, you don't agree with what I say, but that's, that's common sense. We gotta sit here and say, we don't like farmers, I love farmers, I mean, I, I really love them, 'cause I know how hard they gotta work. 3 o'clock in the morning, they up, working? Why would I wanna go against the farmers? They gonna feed us, and then we get the food ain't, we get poisoned by solo, I don't, y'all, y'all, who can tell me you don't? I'm not gonna believe what the solo people say, I'm not gonna believe what the farmers say. If any type, we can get some research, and I have talked to both sides, and they said they don't know yet. Just like Ms. Councilwoman Ballow said, we don't have no example in the city of Suffolk, 'cause I haven't been here 25 years. We don't have no example, so I gotta sell it to you. I'm just asking, can we get some information from this city? And let's find out, after we read it and find out, we gotta trust the city, so let's find out, then we can make a decision what Suffolk wanna do. But sitting here and we saying, we ain't ready, or sitting here, and I understand that, I mean, I don't know. Who don't wanna be healthy? I mean, I think that we should find out. And this gentleman just can't say something to make me wanna think, he said, you know, you don't hear the sound, but the livestock hear, oh. They can't go nowhere, they out there. So let's find these things out. People just come and tell us what's going on, I like to know what's the truth is, to make this a decision on this council. So, Al, if you can get me some information, I appreciate it, we'll get it. For we can go ahead and make some decisions that Suffolk, we not gonna have solo.
Councilman Rector?
I tell you what, if I can, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to defer my time and let Councilman Johnson speak, but I would like to speak after he does.
Councilman Johnson?
I'm gonna be very brief, but Lou is 100% right. What we have put in place with our recommendations for solo farms, these people jumped through all the hoops, they did exactly what we asked them to do, but what we didn't ask them to do was to provide us with more data, our staff needs to do it as well, and we need to go out and, and sub-staff it, get somebody that can give us more information. But Lou, what you don't know is, we're not the only city that's struggling with this. No, but I'm saying, every city in this market is watching us as to what we do. My real concern about solar, I'm not opposed to solar, I'm certainly not opposed to this family putting solar in, but I, if it's done in the appropriate way, and it doesn't ruin our lands, I am honestly concerned about the farmland, and what a plethora of these is gonna do to other farmers, thinking, okay, he did it, I'm gonna do it. I don't think that should be the plan. I also think that we shouldn't be putting solar in areas with homes. I don't think, I think these people living on this farm and living on these roads, it's not fair. I mean, I can't personally condone it, I don't think it's right, 'cause I know how I would feel if it was in my yard, but that needs to be in our plans, and they look at that and say, there can't be a house within X number of feet, or whatever. We haven't looked at it hard enough, and that is my concern. I am so upset about this whole thing, because both of these young men, the fellow that's presenting this thing is a remarkable fellow, I've talked to him too much, and I, I am, he knew how I was gonna vote, because I don't think we should be replacing our farmlands with solar, but if we're going to allow it, which we have done by giving them this information, we've kinda misled them. And I, I don't know the solution to it, but I do know, I can't support it. My community doesn't support it. So let's give them strict enough variance for this, that, okay, we've, that we could all agree with, we haven't agreed with anything. I'm not even sure we've really been presented with a plan, or talked about it, or, I mean, we've gotta do that. I, I'm as concerned as Lou with this, but I just, as it is written, I can't support it. We need to do our homework, we need to research it, and then go forward, and this is probably the one time I've voted that I really, truly, I think that's why I missed the vote early on, because I thought you pushed a round circle, I don't vote no usually. I don't know, I don't know, I'm upset with it, but I cannot support it as it is, I'm sorry.
Councilman Fawcett? Oh, sorry, you want John first, okay, Councilman Rector? Councilman Rector?
And I'm gonna try to be as brief with this as I can. Obviously, and it's been said, the 460 project set a really, really bad example to what a solar farm will look like and function and everything else. And one of the reasons why that happened is because that legislation got passed in 2020 promoting solar energy and whatnot, and to be honest with you, Suffolk was ill-prepared when that application came across to deal with it. Since then, at least twice, this council has requested the Planning Commission and the Committee on Ordances to go back and take a look at how we treat solar farms. So the vegetation, the fenestration requirements have been upgraded, the setbacks have been upgraded, the noise levels and whatnot have been talked about. And if, you know, and I kinda agree with the mayor, if, everything that this applicant has done exceeds our expectations almost exponentially, if, if... If, if we're not going to approve a project like this, then we really do need to just simply take solar off of the, off of the table. And Councilman Johnson, you brought up a good point. Localities are looking at Suffolk and how we deal with solar. And I think for the most part, how Suffolk has dealt with solar has been fairly responsible. We had a bad project that got the whole thing started. We have revisited the ordinance, and we have revisited the ordinance. And I know that some of them have come through, and they've been denied because they're too close to too many residences, or this, that, or the other thing. But, you know, like I say, if this one doesn't fly, I'm not sure what project would fly. I mean, everybody at the DIAS has admitted that this company has gone above and beyond the expectations. They're a responsible company, they're good people, they know what they're doing, and, you know, the only objection is, is, or the primary objection is, we don't want to lose tillable land, which I do agree with. But if that's the primary argument, then virtually every rezoning application that comes before this body needs to be rejected because more than likely, it's going to have an impact on tillable land within the city. So for that, you know, if it comes up again, I will vote to approve this one, just like I did the previous one.
Want to make that a motion?
Well, let's, Councilman Fawcett.
I got you on, okay.
Lot of good points here tonight. One thing I brought up to the managers, we got a retreat coming up.
I've already mentioned it to them.
And this is a time that we could have dug in and listened to the professional experts about this. That was a good time that I wanted to defer this out. So by then, you would have had some information. Because you got to be remembering, I think the gentleman said it the best, it's his land, his farm, and he has a right to do what he wants to do with it if it meets the requirement that is set forth in the U D O or in the comp plan within the city of Suffolk. And this is not going to be the only farmer that ever comes before this council that wants to do something. Now, he made a good point. Well, we could go ahead and throw houses on there now. We go ahead and throw some houses on there, and that's gonna come before us here. I mean, he wants to do, if I'd have known and had a little more forethought, I wish he would have had more time to describe a few things that he described to me. Because family means more to me than any vote on this DIAS. And what he told me earlier is about his two children, grandchildren, that have autism. And anybody with any sensitivity in what he is trying to do outweighs, in my opinion, anything that he's brought up about this solar farm, because he is right. The more you listen to this, he's right. He's done his due diligence, he's done everything. We're gonna be on him the whole process way. He's not gonna get away with anything. And yeah, there's some houses around there, but there's gonna be houses around every development. There's nobody out there just sitting in the, in the middle of the land with nothing around them. And it's not gonna happen. You have land, you gonna be sitting around. I have land, she has land, we all have land up here to a point, that one day, we're gonna want to do something with it. Whether you do it, or your next generation does it. But to sit here and not give this an opportunity, instead of causing this to fail, as I asked, I asked for this to be set down, nobody had a stomach for it, so we could have gotten more time, and the man wouldn't have lost this project, he could have waited out a few more, a couple, few months. We're gonna go march and go to our, our tree treat. We could have got this information. And it's, if you think you're gonna get every piece of scientific information that you're gonna always agree with, it's not going to happen. There's too many scientific opinions out here. So, you know, I, I'm gonna tell you, I'm not gonna sit here and keep denying these things just because it's farmland. I'm not gonna do it. Unless it's so vain that we can't do it, I'm telling you, we missed it, we should have put this in continuance, I'm disappointed, I abstained because I didn't want to vote no. I wanted to give the company a chance. I wanted to give the company a chance, but nobody wanted to do it. And I still want to do this, because if it's not gonna pass this vote, I want to make a motion to continue this down, so that we have an opportunity to save part of this, because if not, I'm gonna vote yes anyway, just for the pure sake of what I know now and what I've heard. I'm not gonna take the opportunity away from this man and his family, from what I heard tonight. I don't care. I'm about family.
Counsel, any other questions or comments? If not, I'll wrap it up, and we'll take a shot at a vote here in a minute. First of all, to Councilman Fawcett's vote, I didn't vote to continue it, because as far as I'm concerned, nothing would change, this is a no-brainer. This, I mean, we've looked at eight or nine of these things, and we've probably split fifty-fifty on whether they've been approved or not approved. Because that's what we get paid to do, and they're not as specific guidelines as we might, would like to have, but we got elected to make decisions, some of them aren't just black and white, they're in the gray. This one was as innocuous as you could possibly have, with the size where it is, with what is being proffered, with the fact that they were keeping, I mean, what's gonna change between now and ninety days from now, or ninety years from now? If you can't approve this one, I agree with Councilman Ward, okay? Take solar farms off the panel, take them off the books. I think I had brought this up before with the city attorney, can we put a moratorium on them? And he shook his head, no, there's no such thing as putting a moratorium on, in ordinance, so is that still correct? I remember. And this was well over a year ago. I asked that question, and here we are, doing the same thing. And I think there's something about what stupidity is, or something, but we're doing the same thing. I hear the arguments as to, I'm not opposed to solar, I just don't want it. Nobody seems to be opposed to solar, but we don't want to flip any agricultural land. Well, where are you gonna put solar? The only other place you could put solar that would make some sense, well, it might be on some M zoning, some manufacturing zoning. Nine out of ten times, it's gonna involve agricultural land. And I, I mean, and I'm all about it. I mean, I love farmers, I like our heritage, I know, we got one hundred and fifty-nine thousand square acres of farmland right now. I'm not for doing away with farmland. I don't like when rules change in midstream. I've been in business for fifty years. If there's one thing that I get cranked up about, is when I look at the rules and I follow the rules, I expect, there's a reasonable expectation that if you do what you're told to do, when you dot all the i's, you cross all the t's, you x all the x's, and you do everything you're supposed to do, you spend time and resources and money to get to a particular point, and then because we don't like it, we're not gonna do it. This came to us with a seven oh vote from the Planning Commission, it came with staff recommendation, it can't, I mean, it can't be any more positive than that. I mean, we have a responsibility to look at these things, even if it came with a recommendation. I mean, it seems like things go sideways, but anyhow. We've got a process, we follow the process. We've approved two of these things prior to this one, that's not even, I mean, it's not even a ballpark, it's like a seven eleven versus a Walmart. We have to weigh property rights. And property rights doesn't mean everybody gets to sell and do what they want to do or what they gotta do, because along with property rights comes our responsibility to protect the quality of life for those neighbors in our city and everybody else. It can't be just willy-nilly, it's mine, I'll put up a whatever. We don't do that, that's why we have so many things that require conditional use permits. Because it's not something illegal, it's something that we get paid to look at and say, well, is that a bad spot for that? And that's how we should be doing solar farms. And that will be on our retreat, because, I mean, I've been mentioning it for a year or so, and it kind of, you know, kind of went away, and then we get something like this, and it kind of brings it all up again. And then once we come up with some guidelines, then we need to kind of stick with it. If it makes sense, do it, even though you may not like it. Because it's not what you want to see. But I'm disappointed that we didn't approve the first one. Because I think it sends a bad message, that you cannot depend on our city to basically do what we're supposed to do, if you do what we tell you to do. Because if it trickles down to everything we do, you know, people could go do business someplace else. They're gonna say, don't go up there, you could waste six months, nine months, put in your application, go through this, go through planning, go through that, go through this, and you get up there, and then boop, it's gone. And I'm not just saying that there's reason, not reasons to do that, but there should be a reasonable expectation that if you do all those things, dot the i's, cross the t's, break the x's, just don't change it midstream. If we wanted to change it, look at something else, it shouldn't affect the people making the application today. If we want to take them off the table, take it off the table. If you want to change the rules, change the rules for the next guy. So with that being said, I mean, I don't know what, which way we're going this time, but we need to look at this whole thing, we need to get a grip on it. If we need to take it off the books until after the retreat, then it would be my suggestion, I don't know what we have to do to do that, just take it out of there, and you cannot apply for a solar farm in the city of Suffolk until we get our act together. And I got no problem with that, at least everybody knows what the rules are. So with that being said, I don't think we have a motion for approval, a motion for denial, or a motion to continue. Do I have anything from, do I have anything from counsel? Anybody like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion. I'm sure we could find a way to bring that first one back on the table.
Well, I can't do that now.
Because I think, I think it would be a whole lot different than, than what it was, because...
You like to make a motion?
Yeah, I want to make a motion to go ahead and approve the...
Okay, we got a motion for approval, Councilman Fawcett. Do I have a second? Councilman Rector?
I'll go ahead and second it.
Got a second from Councilman Rector. Is there any further discussion of the motion? Hearing none, council members prepared to vote? Please cast your vote. Madam Clerk, please record the vote.
The motion is approved by a vote of four to three, with Councilmembers Bennett, Councilmember Labarlo, and Councilmember Johnson voting in opposition.
Okay, at this time, it is, what time is it? It's late. It's like nine fifty-seven. We are going to take a ten-minute recess, we will, or a little bit more, and then we'll meet back here at ten-ten. We will, or a little bit more, and then we'll meet back here at 10:10.
Ladies and gentlemen, the rules shall apply as varies from our natural rights all members to the public.[196.45]
Two of them. But again, this is an opportunity again to allow the neighbors to operate their golf carts within the neighborhood with signage in place to do so. I hear some views of the existing streets. Again, this is kind of universal. This is really what we're looking for in a neighborhood like this. Relatively wide, flat, open streets, good sight distance. And as we review that, again, we do look at traffic data. So again, the traffic volumes are not too high. The speeds are right where we think is appropriate in a neighborhood. And with that, having reviewed this, we find no evidence to suggest that permitting these golf carts in this community would be detrimental and would endanger the safety of persons. And as such, Public Works recommends that this be adopted. And I believe you have before you an ordinance to do so. And I'm available to answer any questions you may have.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Lewis. An ordinance has been presented for council's consideration, and a motion would be in order. With the pleasure of council. Councilman Johnson.
Move for acceptance.
Councilperson Butler Barlow.
Second.
And we got a second from Councilperson Butler Barlow. Do we have a discussion of the motion? I would like to make one comment, and I'll be brief. Five words. This is a no-brainer. Okay. Council members, prepare to vote. Please cast your vote. Madam Clerk, please record the vote.
The motion is approved by a vote of seven to zero.
Okay. Our next ordinance has been pulled. We not going to consider it due to item number 12. This was associated to item number 12, which was tabled prior. We have no resolutions tonight. We do have several staff reports, and these are significant land use applications, which is the first time we will be seeing our new process, where we get an earlier look at land use applications that either qualify for the 100, 100, 100, or have been deemed appropriate by the planning director. Mr. Manager.
Yes, Mayor. Vice Mayor, Members of Council. As Mayor said back on January 18th, a work session, we discussed a new process where we had tried to bring some projects that met certain criteria to you early, so you have an early look at them. We do have two projects tonight that Kevin Wine will review with you. One's Lake Kilby Shores, and the other one's the Pinnacle Storage Project. Kevin?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Manager, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Members of Council. These are the first two projects that kind of qualify under the thresholds that we've established related to significant land use projects. Just to remind you what those thresholds were, we call them the 100s. 100 residential units or greater, 100,000 square feet of overall floor area for your commercial uses, or 100 acres. Those are, that's the threshold. And we have two projects that I'll brief you on this evening that meet those. The first being Lake Kilby Shores. This is a request to rezone property on Lake Kilby Road from RE Rural Estate Zoning District to RM Residential Medium Density Zoning District. This includes, let's see, four parcels. And ultimately, the applicant proposes to conditionally rezone almost 90 acres of property located on Lake Coon Road and Lake Kilby Road from RE to RM. The purpose of this rezoning would be to allow for a maximum of 204 single-family units, which has been proffered by the applicant for a gross density of around 2.3 dwelling units per acre. And that existing density, the existing density that's permitted in the RE district of, sorry, of less than, our one unit for every three acres, so different there, but it is located within our growth area. It's designated suburban use district in the central growth area. So the applicant has voluntarily proffered seven conditions in support of this request, and that was included in your packet. Staff will provide a full analysis of this application for the Planning Commission at their meeting next month, and this would go before you alternatively in April, your second meeting in April. The second item we have for discussion this evening, and want to introduce you to, is called the Pinnacle Storage Project. This is located at the corner of Shoulders Hill Road and Pewsville Road in the northern growth area of the city, just on that fringe of the inner ring suburban use district. Ultimately, what the applicant requests to do here is, it's two things. They're going to rezone conditionally from RL, which is the residential low-density zoning district, to B2, general commercial zoning district. And the property is located in a prominent intersection at Shoulders Hill Road and Pewsville Road, and we would consider our locational criteria in our evaluation as it relates to that B2 general commercial zoning district. This would then lead to a CUP. This would be a conditional, I'm sorry, concurrent conditional use permit in order to establish a mini warehouse use. And that's where we get into the 100s. The proposal does exceed 100,000 square feet. So the applicant, in their argument, believes that the property's corner location at a signalized intersection and its visibility to moderately high-traffic area better lends itself to a transitional commercial use rather than a residential use. So these items will come before you at your, tentatively, your second meeting in April. That concludes the information I have for you. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Wine. I would like to make one comment. It's rather unusual. This is the first one of these significant land use applications we've looked at. And the normal process is that the Planning Commission looks at it at their first meeting on Tuesday, on a Tuesday, and then we would look at it the following day on a Wednesday for the first look. But that doesn't work when the council meeting falls on the first day of the month. So, and I guess that's going to happen again next month, but anytime the council meeting is on, our first meeting will be on the first, and then their first meeting will be on the sixth, I guess it is. So it'll be a little backwards, but I don't think it really has a major effect on anything. We'll just have to, but it is a little different than what it was intended for. Okay. That takes care of our staff reports. I'm sorry, yes, sir.
Kevin, can I ask you a real quick question on the Lake Kilby Shores one? Is that the one that we had before, the connectivity with the Pitch Kettle Farm Road that was an issue? And then, does this one also include the connectivity to that road back out to Pitch Kettle Road?
That's a great question. It is the same project. The parcel that was immediately adjacent to Pitch Kettle Farms has been removed, and thus that stub would not be required per our ordinance.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Anything for Mr. Wine? If not, we'll move to motions. We have a motion to schedule a public hearing for March 1st, 2023, to receive public comment on an ordinance to authorize a quitclaim deed between the City of Suffolk and David March Enterprises LLC for their conveyance of real property located on Tax Map in Parcel 40A asterix 76. And a motion would be in order. Councilman Fawcett?
Move to approve.
A motion for approval. Councilman Fawcett, do I hear a second? Councilman Johnson?
Second.
Second from Councilman Johnson. Is there any discussion in the motion? Hearing none. Council members, prepare to vote. Please cast your vote. Madam Clerk, please record the vote.
Motion is approved by a vote of seven to zero.
Our next motion is a motion to schedule a public hearing to be held on February 1st, 2023, to receive public comment on the proposed fiscal year 2024/2033 capital improvements program and plan, and a motion would be in order. Councilman Rector?
I'd like to move, but you said February 1st, not March 1st.
March 1st.
But yes, I want a motion to approve what's written.
Okay. Councilperson Butler Barlow.
Second.
And we got a second. Any discussion of the motion? Hearing none. Council members, prepare to vote. Please cast your vote. Madam Clerk, please record the vote.
The motion is approved by a vote of seven to zero.
Been a long wait. A motion to schedule a city council work session for Wednesday, March 1st, 2023, at 4:00 PM, unless canceled, and a motion would be in order. Councilman Fawcett?
Move to approve.
Motion for approval, Councilman Fawcett and Councilman Johnson?
Second.
Second from Councilman Johnson. Any discussion of the motion? Hearing none. Council members, prepare to vote. Please cast your vote. Madam Clerk, please record the vote.
The motion is approved by a vote of seven to zero.
Madam Clerk, do we have any non-agenda speakers? And if so, please explain the guidelines.
Yes, Mayor Doolan, we do have non-agenda speakers. Each person appearing under the item of business entitled "Non-Agenda Speaker" shall limit their remarks to the services, policies, and affairs of city government, and shall be permitted five minutes for the purpose of presenting his or her matter. Speakers appearing before a city council will not be permitted to participate in the following activities: to campaign for public office, engage in personal attacks, promote private business ventures, or use profanity. Speakers who violate these rules will be declared out of order by the presiding officer and will immediately yield the floor and be seated. Our first speaker is John Riddick, 1205 Bank Street, representing self regarding city maintenance.
Thank you for having me here.
You're welcome.
Thank you. First, I would like to start off by saying, my uncle, my father served as the mayor, vice mayor of Suffolk. My uncle, John Riddick, were the first, you know, one of the first sheriffs, and my father was one of the first black mailmen in Suffolk. And it's an honor to come here, to panel, you know. We have some issues been going on for over 50 years downtown Suffolk, where as far as across the railroad track, nothing has really been done over there. It's just like the people, you know, has been left, just left behind, you know? Nothing been, you know, justified over there in that neighborhood. You know, 99% African-American over there. Taxpayers, hard workers. You guys know the neighborhood. You know, this is my first time here in this building here, and I'm listening to you guys. I know you guys got heart. I know you care. But been a long time. The people haven't received anything, no love over there. I mean, how you guys feel? I'm listening to y'all. Y'all doing your job, but what's the vision there? Well, I mean, when it's going to start? You know, the building is, you know, falling apart. It's right there, right there in your eyes. I mean, you go across that track. I mean, we're not dealing with, it feels like segregation. You know, it's just, it's a bad feeling, you know, to be black, living over there and paying taxes, and you guys know everybody over there. You guys, you guys associate with the peoples over there, with us. So, you know, year in and year out, I mean, you building up all around the outskirts. You're doing a wonderful job. You're making Suffolk look good, but you down the heart, where it really matters, to a lot of people that don't have voices. I mean, I mean, come on, you guys gotta care. I mean, I was a baby. You know, I'm 59 now, and it still look the same. I mean, you guys got the funds, man. You guys got muscle here. Other cities looking at you guys. Talking about looking at you on the soda panel and all of that. Yeah, that's fine. We need advancement. We need leaders, you know? But you cannot keep continuing to ignore those people, my people. You can't. I mean, it's like a soft robbery. You taking their taxpayer's money, and you got seven neighborhoods down there, one restaurant, Fethersham. Where they gonna go eat, man? If they stealing, if they, if they, if they robbing? You know, you got a jailhouse wrecked on a railroad track. Take it down where they located it. Don't be scared. Go down there, you know? A lot of them criminals know the cops by names. Cops know them, know them by name. It's really, it's really asinine to just live like that, and you growing so well on the outskirts. I mean, y'all doing some great things, but you need, you gotta do more, man. I mean, you got, you got, you got coming up, reelection coming up. I gotta see some change. I gotta see some change. I'm the voice of those people. They don't even want to come here because they feel nobody showing them love. I mean, working-class people work every day. Y'all know some of them. You know, hell, Mike, I bought my first car from you, and this Jackson gave me, stopped me, the first cop to stop me. I mean, and I'm back, man. I'm back. It's love. It's love here. Why in the hell, I mean, tell me something. Give me, give me, give me something to take back. Why? That building soon across the railroad track? That look like a backyard of your farm barn, bruh. There's no way y'all had that around your house nowadays. I even helped some of the guys paint your building, Mike. What? What? We gonna keep sitting back there crossing our fingers, listening to all the bigwigs, but they don't want anything but gentrification, man. They need some restaurants. They need some activities. You know, the little shooting pop off? The cops are knowing right off the bat. Who was that? Oh, I know where he stay. I bet he know, and they know everybody down there. Don't be scared. Go down there and get the restaurants to open up for the people. They need something, man. You got seven restaurants, Lake Kennedy, I mean, neighborhoods, Lake Kennedy, Hollywood, Jericho, Atlanta, East Suffolk Garden. They the same people coming out of East Washington Street, coming over here, go to support the Walmart. Everything that y'all putting up over there, they, you know, taking their SSI check, disability checks, supporting the area. They can't, don't have anywhere to go, man. They can't move. What you want them to do? Move? How they gonna, what? What? What are you doing for them? You can reach, you can reach back out to Walmart, food lines, and put some police around there. Come on, man. You know, you gotta, we gotta do more than just what we doing. And I'm hearing you guys, I mean, you guys, you know, y'all good people back here. I don't, I don't see, John, you know, good, great guy. Great conversation with him. I can't see, I can't see no way, you know, that you guys is just not doing nothing over the years, year in and year out. Buying new police cruisers on them, going down there picking them up, throwing them in the can. Come on, man, good people. Might have a couple of bad ones. Lock them up. Lock them up. Control your city. Y'all, you guys are the bosses, man. Control your city. You're not doing a good job. You're not. And you know you're not. Y'all don't even go down there. How many of y'all raise a hand go to Fethersham? I'm telling you, man, come on. You got about $5 million coming out of there, come across the railroad tracks, supporting the areas that you guys don't give, don't care a damn about them people down there. And you know them. I mean, come on, man. I had to, I had to wait this out. And I was just, you know, I'm, I'm lost for words.
Got you, Mr. Rick. I won't cut you off.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Thank you. But you can come back.
What's the vision?
You can stop by and see me.
What's the vision?
You can stop by and see me anytime you want.
Say again?
I said you can stop by and see me whenever you want.
Okay. I need you.
Our final speaker this evening is Kiana Boone, 329 U.S. Highway 158, East Gatesville, North Carolina, representing Star Haven, regarding the introduction of the Star Haven Organization and its services.
All right. All right. I picked a good night, huh?
Yeah.
All right, look, should've came with coffee.
You earned your time tonight.
Yes, Lord. But yeah, basically what she said, I just, I wanted to, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Manager, and the City Council, I just wanted to come today to introduce myself to, to the city, as well as let you know what we do in the area. I am the president and one of the founding members of Star Haven Incorporated. We are, just to let you know what STAR stands for, it stands for Supporting, Transforming, and Achieving Results. We provide, we provide permanent supportive housing for the single adult homeless community and out of Suffolk, Virginia, and the Western Tidewater community. My cheat notes, just to make sure I'm good. We are a 501(c)(3) nonprofit organization, and we're committed to improving the lives of others by meeting their basic needs and providing a safe and healthy environment so they can thrive. We, we serve the community by providing housing that is decent, safe, and below market value. Our population includes the homeless and those at risk of homelessness with a focus on older and disabled adults with more complex service and support needs. We currently operate three housing units here in Suffolk, and we also have a extension of our organization where we perform two food distributions in the Hollywood area, like the other gentleman spoke of. We do not have a brick-and-mortar building, so when you see us set up, we set up a tent, tables, and between our partnerships with Operation Blessing, Harris Tita, Aldi, just to name a few, we pick up food from there, and we actually pick it up that morning and distribute it by that evening to citizens that are in need. We have over 125 people on our call list that we call every month, or we are posted on Facebook for, on the social media sites. We service over 100 households through our food distribution program. The reason why Star Haven was created, it was for a means of addressing the lack of affordable and quality housing available to high-barrier singles in the Western Tidewater region. I heard tonight that everyone said there was a shortage of housing. That is incorrect. It's a shortage of affordable housing. We basically are looking to help with getting these, these high-barrier, these high-barrier citizens back into the community as, as being, and under a structure. We work closely with Western Tidewater Community Service Board, so they help with our supportive And our housing model combines affordable housing assistance with voluntary support services to address the needs of each individual. We are helping with maintaining stable housing. We work closely with, just to name a few, we are COC referral program, a COC referral program that we have under Star Haven. We also work with the crisis hotline. We are a referral partner with four kids and any, and in some of your local shelters and outreach services. Just to name a few of our corporate partners, we, we get support from your local Walmart, Lowe's, the Planning Councils, Southeastern Virginia Homeless Coalition, CAPS, Fresh Skills, United Way of Hampton Roads, the Salvation Army, Western Tidewater Community Service Board, I mentioned earlier, the Workforce Council, Pernell Bread, and Operation Blessing. We also work with some of the community with Tidewater Cove, and, as well as the CCP program with probation and parole of Suffolk. I'm pretty sure you'll probably see me again, because we are a, a team of seven. We are a seven-member board, as well as yourself. We are truly a volunteer. We do not get paid for what we do, and it's just a labor of love, and we do depend on the hearts of the citizens and the city to help us, as well as others that care. Right now, I did leave some pamphlets and stuff for everyone that whenever you are woke and want to read it, you can, as well as, feel free to contact me if you have any other questions, email, Facebook, that would be great. Right now, we do have a toll that you drive going on. I left some pamphlets, well, left some flyers here. We have eight boxes in the city, Obese Healthcare Foundation, Walmart, Washland, Pernell Bread, Tire Choice, and UPS Store in front of, on the other end of Obese. And I'm going to leave it with 20 seconds. Thank you.
That concludes the speakers. Mayor.
It will now move to new business. Madam Clerk, are there any additions to tonight's agenda?
The following individuals have been nominated for consideration for appointment to the respective boards and commissions. Two nominees for the Early Childhood Development Commission, both would be at-large representatives, Virginia Staler and Dr. Latinet Harris, and a nomination for the Economic Development Authority of the City of Suffolk, representing the Suffolk Borough, and that representation, that term would be effective March the 1st of 2023, George Consalvo.
Counsel, a motion be in order? Councilman Fawcett?
Move to approve, Mayor.
Got a motion for approval from Councilman Fawcett. Councilman Johnson?
Second.
Second from Councilman Johnson. Is there any discussion in the motion? Hearing none. Council members, prepare to vote. Please vote. Madam Clerk, please record the vote.
The motion is approved by a vote of seven to zero.
Members of council, do you have any new business you'd like to bring forward tonight? Hearing none. We'll move to announcements and comments, and at this time, I'll ask interim Director of Media and Community Relations Department Jennifer Moore, if she has any announcements.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, City Council, City Manager. I'll start the announcements off tonight with a reminder that the City of Suffolk will observe the President's Day holiday on Monday, February 20th, and city offices will be closed. Normal operations will resume on Tuesday, February 21st, at 8:30 a.m. There is no interruption to trash and recycling collection, and Suffolk Transit will operate a normal schedule. Exciting news out of our Finance Department this evening. The Government Finance Officers Association is pleased to announce that the City of Suffolk has received their Award for Outstanding Achievement in Popular Annual Financial Reporting for its report ending in fiscal year 21. This award represents a significant achievement for Suffolk. In order to be eligible, the city has, the city also had to receive certification for its annual comprehensive financial report as well. A reminder that the City of Suffolk Department of Public Utilities is smoke testing the sanitary sewer system in various areas of the city in the next few months. All areas scheduled to be smoke tested will be notified with door hangers that describe the upcoming smoke testing efforts. Smoke testing involves injecting opaque-colored smoke through the sanitary sewer pipes to locate and identify deficiencies that may contribute to sanitary sewer overflows. The smoke used for smoke testing is non-toxic, harmless, and creates no hazard to people, pets, or the surrounding area. Beginning March 6th and again on April 10th, smoke testing is scheduled to commence in the following areas of the city outlined on your screen. For more information on smoke testing, areas to be tested, or testing schedules, visit The Suffolk Police Department is launching its first Coffee with the Chief event this Friday, February 17th, at the East Suffolk Rec Center at 8:30 a.m. This community event will be an opportunity for citizens to meet with Police Chief Al Chandler and accompanying Suffolk Police personnel to discuss current community issues, ask questions about public safety concerns, and learn about the ongoing Suffolk Police Department initiatives. And a shout-out to SPD. On Saturday, February 4th, the Suffolk Police Department underwater search and recovery team participated in the Virginia Beach Polar Plunge, an annual fundraising event supporting the Special Olympics. This event, the event this year raised more than $1.5 million for this great cause. The SPD dive team joined other Hampton Roads first responders in creating a safety barrier for participants to ensure that everyone stayed safe while in the water. They also gave out high fives and cheered on those who took the plunge. It was one of the coldest days of the year, but a good time was had by all, knowing that it was for a worthy cause. The Public Works Department has released their quarterly report for the second quarter of the fiscal year. The report provides a summary of departmental highlights from October 2022 to the end of December 2022. The report is available for viewing online at sufficva.us, and additionally, hard copies are available at the Public Works Department and City Hall locations. The City of Suffolk is updating its Comprehensive Plan, Suffolk 2045, and is seeking input from the community through a series of community engagement sessions held throughout February. Participants will have an opportunity to voice their opinions on topics and themes important to them by attending the sessions. The sessions will be hosted in locations across the city, representing all seven boroughs. We're about halfway through the series and have three sessions remaining. The next session is at Nansman River High School tomorrow, February 16th, followed by Colonel Fred Cherry on February 23rd, and then the Curtis R. Milteer Rec Center on February 28th. All sessions begin at 6:00 p.m. For those unable to participate in the sessions, a survey is available online for community input regarding critical questions that have emerged from the comprehensive planning process. To complete the survey, visit suffic2045.org. The Suffolk Public Library has launched the After-School Snack Program, which will run through the remainder of the Suffolk Public School Year through June 15th. The program will operate out of the Morgan Memorial Library, offering free after-school snacks, offering free after-school snacks each day for children under the age of 18. All snacks will be distributed on a first-come, first-served basis. For more information, visit sufficpubliclibrary.com. In celebration of Black History Month, Suffolk Tourism invites you to join the Underground Railroad Pavilion Tour. Railroad Pavilion Tour at the Great Dismal Swamp. Come out to learn about how the swamp was used as a sanctuary for thousands of African-Americans by way of the Underground Railroad. For more information, check out Visit Suffolk VA dot com. And Keep Suffolk Beautiful has an action-packed month in March. Volunteers are still needed for both of their cleanup events, starting with their St. Patrick's Day River Cleanup on Saturday, March 18th, at Constance Wharf Park. And they are also leading efforts in Suffolk to encourage participation in this year's Great American Cleanup. The event will take place across the region on March 24th and 25th, and all Hampton Roads localities will be taking part in the initiative. Keep Suffolk Beautiful is also excited to host its next recycling and tire amnesty day for residents on Saturday, March 25th, at the Public Works Operations Facility at 800 Carolina Road from 9:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. This is a free event and a great opportunity to recycle and dispose of unwanted items. Accepted items include electronics, batteries, household hazardous waste such as oil, gas, and propane tanks. And this event will also accept tires and large appliances. For more information on this and all of their upcoming events, visit sufficva.us. And Suffolk Parks and Rec is excited to announce that the registration for their spring sports is now open. The Adult Basketball League season will run from March 8th to April 10th. This is a nine-week league with one game per week, and games will be played at Booker T. Washington Rec Center. Team registration fee is $320, and individual players interested in joining a team are also encouraged to participate. The Spring Youth Outdoor Soccer League is for boys and girls ages four to 13. The cost is $60 for residents, $70 for non-residents. This is an eight-week league with practice beginning the week of March 20th. Games will be played at Sleepy Hole Park. And the Youth T-Ball League is also kicking off for baseball beginners. The cost is $30 and includes uniforms. This is an eight-week league with practicing beginning the week of March 20th, and games will, will be played at Peanut Park. For more information or to register, visit sufficva.us. And Suffolk Parks and Rec would also like to remind you that they are building a new playground in the Holland area and want to hear from you. Residents are asked to complete this survey for their input on the playground design and features. Check out the Suffolk Parks and Rec on Facebook to complete the survey before March 15th. And of course, on your screen are the various ways to stay connected to the City of Suffolk happenings. Thank you and have a great evening.
Hey, thank you, Ms. Moore. We'll now move on to comments from council, Councilperson Butler Barlow. Whoop, let me get you. I got you. Here we go.
I'm gonna be very brief because it's been a long night. Appreciate everybody that came out tonight. Appreciate all the good conversation that we had up here this evening. It's been a difficult night, but appreciate everyone's thoughts and hope we can work through some of these things at the retreat. The only social thing I want to comment on tonight is my mom is 94 years old today. I know she's not watching, but she's waiting for my phone call. But she sets a tough act to follow, and I just want to honor her by saying happy birthday. Thank you.
Councilman Bennett?
I just have one request from Mr. Lewis, the City Manager. Nelson Parkway and Porson Boulevard, the ballots was taken down there at the 711. That's a dangerous intersection. People are coming out now trying to cross over, coming from Porson Boulevard, trying to go across Nelson Parkway into 711. Couple of people calling, they've just about had accidents there in the last few days. And I understand if they're getting ready to do construction there, that they need to move it, but until they start construction, I think we need to have the safety there until it need to be taken down, because right now it is too dangerous at that intersection to have it on. People have gotten used to having it where they can't go across. Now people is going back across there, so I'd appreciate it. We would put that back in place until they start cleaning the lot that they need the access to it for the safety of the people. Thank you.
Councilman Johnson?
Would you, three quick items. Suffolk Art League's Antique Show is coming up. We don't want to miss it at the Kings Fork Middle School, February 25th to 26th. I'm gonna help in the kitchen. Thanks to everyone who came out tonight. We honestly do appreciate all of the citizens coming out and giving us their opinion. The only third item Mr. Riddick brought to mind for me at the 2045 Chucka Tuck meeting the other night, a lady stood up, and I was so impressed, she actually made a really good point. She said, what do I want from our city? I want us to put as much time, effort, and money into downtown as we have in northern Suffolk. We didn't actually put it all in northern Suffolk, but I think we all get the point. It is time for us to reinvest in our city. If we want to change downtown, we've all got to be a part of it, so I invite Mr. Riddick to be a part of it, and hopefully we, as a council, will too. We need to, we do need to make some changes as far as making our downtown more livable, more, more safe, and just better. We can do it. Thank you.
Councilman Richter?
Oh, we're gonna switch to this side. And I am also going to be brief because I don't think anybody's still up watching, and there's certainly nobody left here. But I would like to congratulate all the award winners at the most recent Suffolk Student Art 2023 held at the Suffolk Art Gallery on Bosley Avenue. There were over 200 pieces of art submitted by 161 students, with 111 pieces ultimately being selected for the exhibit. A special recognition goes to Alicia Jones, who won Best in Show for her Birth of the Show Angel, and I hope I got that right, done in colored pencil in her mixed media work, Mangra Adiam at Alter House. She attends Nansman River and the Governor's School for the Art. And then the first place winner was Meredith Edwards, and she won for her photography titled Evil Twin. Meredith is a student at Nansman Suffolk Academy, and I want to congratulate again to all the award winners and participants, and you can find a complete list of the award winners on the Suffolk Art League website. Speaking of Nansman Suffolk Academy, I would like to congratulate Kansas City Chiefs linebacker Cole Christensen, who is a graduate of Nansman Suffolk Academy and went on to West Point. While at West Point, Cole was one of only a few in the history of the West Point football team that was elected captain of the football team as an underclassman. The Virginian Pilot, who evidently does not know that Suffolk is a part of Hampton Roads, and the mayor knows that that's been a beef of mine for some time, did a week-long series of articles highlighting players that have participated or are participating in past and present Super Bowls. Despite having written the author of the article several times, as well as written a letter to the editor, the pilot failed to mention our hometown, our hometown contributor to this year's Super Bowl. I would like to commend James and the Suffolk News Herald, they did a nice article on Cole and his family attending the Super Bowl, and I think we can all be proud of Cole, he and his family are what a lot of people would aspire to be. Finally, I wanted to discuss the recent train derailment in East Palestine, Ohio, that released a huge amount of toxic chemicals into their local environment. As we all know, train traffic in Suffolk is an everyday occurrence. I would like to ask the City Manager and the Fire Chief if reacting to a train derailment is part of our emergency response preparedness. One of the more disturbing facts that I have learned about this incident, and this was on the news this morning, and there are many disturbing facts about this incident, is that even though 20 of the 150 train cars were carrying hazardous chemicals, that was somehow below the federal threshold of having to alert the state and local authorities that those people, those materials would be moving through their area. I don't know what the threshold is for having to alert local officials, but that should be looked into, and I have reached out to Congresswoman Jen Kiggins in her office for an explanation of that, and I got a very detailed email response, but I'm not going to go through that now because everybody wants to go home. And with that, I will say goodnight.
All righty, Councilman Fawcett?
John, you were too long. I don't have much, I just wanted to give a shout out to the Sheriff's Office over here in Suffolk. They had a unveiling of their mural here on the 9th, on Thursday, the 9th, and I don't know all the names of all the participants, but that mural was just phenomenal. They, I'll give a shout out to James. He did a nice big spread across the front of the Suffolk News Herald for everybody to read, so I wanted to say out to Sheriff E.C. Harris and all his folks, what a great job, and all the participants that were a part of the art group. Happy birthday to your mother, 94 years old. That's pretty cool. I hope I could make 94, but I don't think I will. Also, NSA had a great art show this past few weeks. That was, turned out pretty good. Thank you all for the good meeting tonight. We all had a little something, input on some things here, so maybe we'll get some real clarity on some things during our retreat. Looking forward to that coming up. So, thank you and goodnight.
Vice Mayor Ward?
Yeah, so I'd like to give my condolences to the students in Michigan State University that got killed by one of the gunmen, and also give God blessings to the five that still, possibly still in the hospital with critical illness. With that, I say God bless.
All righty. All right, I'll wrap it up, and I'll try to be as brief as I can. Just touch back earlier with our certificate of recognition to Mr. Richard Malito, the designer of the Freedom Flag. We are proud to say that Suffolk is the first city in the Commonwealth of Virginia to recognize the Freedom Flag as a symbol of the events that took place in 9/11, and Mr. Malito is from Suffolk, so that's good stuff for the state of the city, too. The Sheriff's Office, the mural, I mean, it's great. I'm trying to figure it out, I'm gonna see if I can get one done in the dealership when I remodel the inside this year. The designs were submitted by Nesman Suffolk Academy, Nesman River High School, Lakeland Kings Fork High School, and Suffolk Christian Academy. Kristen Buck of K. Buck Designs formed the design, and Suffolk Christian Academy students assisted her in the painting of the mural, and it is, it is really, I mean, they should do one right here in City Hall when they come in. I mean, it's, it's killer, very well done. I did go to a complane engagement in Chucka Tuck at Oakland Elementary, which was very well-attended. Appreciate the citizens coming out to all of those. I haven't gone to as many as I'd like to, and I'd like to thank the Vice Mayor for kind of filling in for me, and a lot of them. I know he calls me on the way home from the meetings, he calls me the next morning and try to bring me up to speed with what happened during the meetings. I want to thank the staff, Jennifer, Kevin, Kevin, you know, for what you do to put those on. I know it's going to be getting old after you do five or six of them, you're probably, you know, waking up at 2:00 in the morning thinking about them. Pause for the Arts, Suffolk Humane Society, one of their biggest fundraisers, is this Saturday, the 18th, at Hilton Garden. You still get tickets, starts at 6:00 p.m. Live auction, silent auction. Have a few mutts running around, a lot of fun, good food. I want to just shout out to Ms. Marie Hill. Most of you folks know her, we've been celebrating her birthday, she's now 102. So, she is the matriarch of Hobson, I guess you'd call her, and she's having a little, it's a parade, she calls it a drive-by. I'm a little reluctant to call it a drive-by, and the chief's saying, no, don't call it a drive-by. It's a drive-by parade. So, that's a, that's a parade without firearms, right? Drive-by parade. Yeah, she's on a hutch, hutch and circle, Left Door Macedonia Avenue. Shout out to her, she's one of my staunchest supporters and has been for a long time, and I hope she gets another 102 under her belt. And with that, I will finish up with my quote of the night, and that is, and it kind of appropriate, I think, with what seems to have transpired over the last couple of months or so, that quote is from Margaret Wheatley, who is a writer, teacher, and speaker, still alive, and that is, "There is no power for change greater than a community discovering what it cares about." How appropriate can we get? And with that, no one else has anything, I will entertain a motion for adjournment. Mr. Councilman Fawcett?
Move for approve.
You're on top of that one. Vice Mayor Ward?
Second.
A second from Vice Mayor Ward. Any discussion of the motion? Hearing none, council members prepare to vote. Please cast your vote. Madam Clerk, please record the vote.
The motion is approved by a vote of seven to zero.
This meeting stands adjourned.